Doing anything like this throughout the country. And it's a very, very positive program and activity that know that literally you can see that the city is giving back.
And your neighborhood could be next. Stay tuned. In Reseda, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Around 85 computers were handed out. Well, turning now to a program where students help each other to succeed. City Year, part of the National AmeriCorps Program, held its 10th annual swearing-in ceremony with a fresh crop of volunteers. Anna Marcos takes a look.
You could say the young people in the City Year AmeriCorps Program are cheerleaders of sorts. Today, close to 300 volunteers are getting sworn into City Year Los Angeles, a nonprofit program that goes into schools in disadvantaged neighborhoods. The volunteers help teachers and students in the classroom with one-on-one tutoring, mentoring, and academic assistance for students with the highest need.
Each school year, one in four of our students drops out. In some of the communities we serve, the dropout rate is close to 50%.
Well, I serve to basically be a shining star that lights the way for those who may be lost in the dark.
This is a great opportunity to give back to the community that I came from and to also be able to work with students.
What you're doing is you're giving hope and inspiration to young men and women, young boys and girls who have so many obstacles laid in front of them through no fault of their own.
On its 10th anniversary, the City Year Program is now in 28 L.A. schools, in places like Watts, South L.A., Boyle Heights, and Pico Union. Mayor Eric Garcetti spoke to the volunteers through video.
A recent study showed that students at City Year schools are up to three times more likely to improve their math and English scores. They have better odds of crossing that finish line on graduation day.
We are building a movement that truly will change the world.
This year, City Year Corps members, there is a hate that is directed at our kids and their families and their communities that has a national stage unlike we have seen in generations.
What? Good morning! Buenos dias!
Many of these young people are college graduates who themselves have taken advantage of academic programs in their neighborhoods. Now they are ready to pay it forward and help other students like them succeed. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
My name is Alex and you know what I got?
What do you got?
In its 10 years, the City Year Program has helped more than 27,000 students succeed. Well, maybe you or someone you know is an older adult who can no longer drive. Well, that shouldn't stop them from exploring Los Angeles, especially since Metro is offering group tours for seniors on how to use public transit. Gil Reyes has more from Union Station. Gil.
Well, Yana, here in car-centric Los Angeles, the philosophy has been for years that if you were too old to drive, then that was it. You were relegated to your home or your living room all day with nowhere to go. But not so anymore, especially with so many options on Metro available. And there are groups out there to help you make the transition. Barbara Jaden leads what's known as the On the Move Riders Club from her home city of Duarte. Once a week, this group of older adults gets together, rides Metro, and explores all the great things Los Angeles has to offer without ever driving.
So this club came along at just the perfect time for me. And I've met all kinds of new friends and new adventures. Every week is a new adventure. Santa Monica is always a popular destination. And now that we can get there on the Gold and then on the Expo all the way, that's always a popular one. Naples Island, but that's totally with buses, out of Belmonte Station and cruised Naples Island, end up at Belmont Pier Brewery. I don't know if that's the name of it, but it's a nice little restaurant down there.
These group tours are free, except for the fare and the price of lunch. The goal here is to encourage more seniors to use public transportation, seniors who've spent most of their lives driving but might be intimidated to make the switch.
We're hoping that, you know, after several trips, a person would feel like, oh, okay, this isn't so hard and I can do this. And, oh, I learned about Route, you know, 25. And it goes right by the Trader Joe's that I love. Why don't I just go on my own?
Roughly 25,000 older adults ride Metro every year. Some of the newer ones have gathered here at this symposium at Union Station to learn about some of the secret perks, like senior discounts. It's just 75 cents for one-way trips, 35 cents during non-peak hours.
And we also hope that we will inspire older adults to get out of their houses and go places because who wants to grow old sitting in your living room? They're learning about their city and their county, and they're having fun and meeting other people, too.
If you can't join a club, just get out and travel with your friends because there's so many places to go that are right near train stations.
So ride Metro, explore Los Angeles, and savor the good life. At Union Station, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Now, Metro has On the Move Clubs in Silmar, Chinatown, and Mar Vista, and is looking to establish more. If you want to start a group or join an existing one, call the number on your screen, 213-922-2299. Well, heading south to Watts, where a two-day festival took attendees on a musical journey around the world, all without having to leave a historic part of Los Angeles. Rasha Goel has more on the celebrations.
It's a day of celebrating indigenous drums, music, dance, and art represented by different cultures, but all under one hub at the Watts Towers Art Center.
It's so multicultural, it's so family-oriented, and we have the best talent in the city onstage.
And there was certainly plenty of talent on hand at this 55th anniversary of the Watts Towers Art Center, which has been the hub of artists and their artwork for decades.
Sometimes we don't get our fair coverage on the media, but Watts is a very rich, rich place culturally. We may be challenged economically, but we're very rich in culture.
After all, the Watts Towers were built by Italian immigrant Simon Rodia. Building this masterpiece was his obsession for 33 years.
We've got to acknowledge where we came from. He started all of this. He was recycling before it was vogue.
The famed Watts Towers have served as the backdrop for a festival that has become a tradition for so many.
This has evolved into a cultural event as opposed to just a family event.
An entire weekend dedicated to the rich cultural diversity that makes up the City of Angels. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Now, if you have kids, then you've probably heard about Pokemon Go. The game is a worldwide sensation, and the city is using it to attract more visitors to area parks. Gil Reyes has more.
The Department of Recreation and Parks has figured out a way to lure visitors to one of L.A.'s best kept secrets.
Today's been pretty great. Today's been pretty great, like a lot of families, a lot of kids.
Welcome to the Exposition Park Rose Garden near USC. The seven-acre park is on the National Register of Historic Places, but because it's hidden behind the Natural History Museum, many Angelenos didn't know it existed until now. After invitations went out on social media to play the popular game Pokemon Go here...
It's on a phone, whether you have an iPhone or a Galaxy, and you download the Pokemon app. And what your, the goal is you, first you join the team, and there's different levels. Levels one, you go all the way up to past 30, and that's depending on how many Pokemons you're able to get. So the more you play, the more Pokemons you get, raises the level, and you go around your community or wherever you may live, and you battle for gems and Pokemon, and it's a good opportunity to be outdoors and play the game.
The Department of Recreation and Parks set up Pokemon Gym Battles and Lure Fests at other locations from Griffith Park to Cabrillo Beach. Players, mostly young people, get their exercise in and explore places they never visited, while others get a chance to sell their wares.
This is a Poké Glove, and it's the world-first glove with a built-in battery. And basically, it charges your phone with a battery in the back of your hand. And so the phone doesn't die since Pokemon Go is an app that drains your battery pretty quickly.
Cashing in on the craze is yet another way to score. At the Exposition Park Rose Garden, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Handsome Dam Recreation Center in Lakeview Terrace and Travel Town near the L.A. Zoo also hosted Pokemon Go Gym Battles. Well, over at City Hall, it was a party aimed at helping the hearing impaired get connected, socialize, shop, and get access to important city services. The annual Deaf Festival L.A. rolled into action with an added conversational twist. Anna Marcos has more.
At this festival, people were not only speaking in tongues, but in American Sign Language. The hand gestures of ASL were everywhere as the annual Deaf Festival L.A. kicked off on the steps of City Hall.
This is an opportunity to come and be, have a wonderful time with people not so much like you, but you can learn, learn to sign here.
Entertainment, vendors, artwork, food trucks, and all kinds of city services helped cater to the hearing impaired, but folks with normal hearing were also welcome.
This is a one-stop shop for people to pick up resources, connect with one another, network. This is a really important and sometimes neglected or not thought of community.
Deaf individuals, families, and communities really see themselves as a whole culture. And I think, you know, we're working very hard in the city of Los Angeles to make sure they're recognized as a culture, just like other folks are.
From train sets to high fashion, this festival had a little something for every taste.
Oh, but we have a fashion show. You know how the people go like, mm, 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 and the hair.
Basically, a good old homegrown community festival like any other, but with a lot lower decibel level and a lot more expressive hand movements. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Councilmember Mitchell Farrell says the city is trying to be more responsive to the hearing impaired. It has installed more video remote interpreting services at libraries and other locations in the city. Well, Councilwoman Nuri Martinez stands up for women's health rights. A staple in the community is honored on its golden anniversary, and a call goes out to all L.A. artists to take part in a special exhibit. All these stories in City Beat. Councilwoman Nuri Martinez recently joined the Los Angeles Coalition for Reproductive Justice to praise passage of a resolution that reinstated abortion care insurance coverage for all women regardless of income, insurance, or where they live. The group asked the city council to lift restrictions on abortion care coverage so that every woman can make a decision that is right for her. They're also calling on Congress to repeal the Hyde Amendment, which prohibits using federal funds to pay for abortion care.
No woman, particularly the most vulnerable in our society, should be forced into an unwanted or dangerous pregnancy by a Washington, D.C. politician.
Councilmember Jose Huizar and Councilmember Karen Price honored the two-time Stanley Cup-winning Los Angeles Kings on their 50th season. The organization, which supports and contributes to many local groups in the community, also announced a $1 million donation to the YMCA to get more kids involved in hockey.
We're going to get hockey sticks in over 5,000 kids' hands, and we think that could really make a big difference.
L.A.'s Housing and Community Investment Department is calling for submissions to be part of a first-of-its-kind exhibit called "The Phases and Faces of Affordable Housing in Los Angeles." The exhibit will run from mid-March through April 2017 and will focus on the human cost of homelessness and the lack of affordable housing in Los Angeles. Between 30 and 50 images and videos will be selected based on creativity, originality, quality, and adherence to the focus of the exhibit. You may submit as many photos, videos, and stories as you like. For information on submissions, visit hcidla.lacity.org/phasenandfaces. An all-new stop sign was installed recently at the intersection of Mesa Avenue and Avenue 61 in Highland Park. This was made possible by community members who spoke at a special meeting of the Board of Public Works in Cypress Park last January. They requested a stop sign to be placed at the intersection. Well, can a mural really improve neighborhood pride? And the bottom line? Well, city leaders and one local merchant are counting on it as they unveil a new business and a new public mural in Sun Valley. Here's Anna Marcos with more.
At Raspado Express, the motto is, "A little bit of street art is good for business and good for the soul." The party helped celebrate the grand opening of the restaurant in Sun Valley and the unveiling of the mural "Childhood" on one of its outside walls.
A lot of my murals have to do with social justice. So there's, you know, books that were banned in Arizona, there's immigration rights, there's environmental justice, global warming, saving water, just kind of make people more conscious of what's happening around the world.
Owner Oscar Limon also put in his own two cents worth when it came to the creative effort.
I thought about having childhood memories of kids playing. I feel like kids are losing that sense of like, street playing, and that was my motivation.
For community members, artists, and non-artists alike, mural art like this is a giant step forward for Sun Valley.
I like seeing young people develop and learn to express their talent in a more positive way than writing on windows and walls.
I hope that kids get involved, but we got to create that environment for them. We got to make it cool, and we got to find them a place where they can express all that good stuff.
Kristy Sandoval's mural work is now featured at five different sites in the valley. Her public art can also be seen in cities around the country and even in Turkey. But for this valley girl, nothing beats art that beautifies and revitalizes your very own neighborhood. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The mural "Childhood" can be found near the corner of San Fernando Road and Sunland Boulevard. Well, celebrate the Day of the Dead, get a behind-the-scenes peek at some of L.A.'s most popular cultural destinations, and your favorite haunted hayride will have you running for cover. All this and this week's Things to Do. Hollywood Forever Cemetery brings to life the largest Day of the Dead celebration in California during its 17th Annual Dia de las Muertes festival. The cemetery grounds are covered with art exhibitions, dance rituals, musical performances, children's arts and crafts projects, and food vendors aplenty. You'll see altars to the dead created by community artists, and you can either watch or participate in the skeleton costume contest. Join the fun on Saturday, October 29 at the Hollywood Forever Cemetery located at 6,000 Santa Monica Boulevard. For more, visit ladayofthedead.com. It's an all-access pass and day-long free event to some of the best of the arts, highlighting the art-centric stretch of Grand Avenue between Temple and Sixth Streets. The Center Theater Group, L.A. Phil, the Music Center, the Broad, and the L.A. Public Library all open their doors for a truly one-of-a-kind experience. Take an inside look at rehearsals, architecture tours, museum exhibitions, performances, workshops, food and drinks for all to enjoy. So grab the whole crew to take a peek behind the scenes for the ultimate Los Angeles field trip. It all happens on Saturday, October 29 on Grand Avenue. For thrill seekers, check out Los Angeles Haunted Hayride. The famed Griffith Park attraction takes folks on a ride through the old zoo where they'll face the underworld and portrayals of the seven deadly sins. This year features a brand-new theme, "Secret Society." Inside the gates of the society, members will bear witness to the clandestine lives of their faction, and in a shocking turn, will be commandeered by the society and sent into an initiation confronting the ghosts of hayride's past on foot, face-to-face. That's right, for the first time ever, guests will leave the safety of the haywagon. The adventure begins at 7:00 p.m. on October 28. Visit losangelshuntedhayride.com for more. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Cain from all of us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacity.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Good morning. Good morning. We're asking council members to please make your way to council chambers. I want to thank council members. I believe we actually have a quorum, so we can go ahead and appreciate. I know there were other committee meetings and other various meetings going on this morning, and so I appreciate that. Madam Clerk, if you could, please call the roll.
Blumenfield, Bonin, Buscayna, Sadio, Englander, Harris-Dawson, Weezer, Coetz, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson. Ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Great, thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Councilmember Blumenfield moves, and Councilmember Bonin seconds. Next item, please.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Councilmember Sadio moves, and Harris-Dawson seconds. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
All right, thank you. If we can have everybody in council chambers please rise, please rise, and we're going to ask Councilwoman Nuri Martinez to please lead us in the flag salute this morning.
We all please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, members, if I can just direct your attention to the agenda, let's go ahead. Madam Clerk, if we can please go ahead and run through the agenda now.
Mr. President, there are requests to continue items 1W and 1Z for two weeks to November 8th, and item 1, I'm sorry, item 52 to November 9th.
All right, that'll be the order without objection. Next item, please.
The Department of Building and Safety requests that the following items be received and filed: 1D as the lien was rescinded due to a department error; items 1M, T, U, V as the liens have been paid in full; 1C and Y as the properties have been determined to be owner-occupied, single-family dwellings and exempt from lien procedures; and additionally, the department requests that the following lien amounts be reduced due to the receipt of partial payments: 1A to $2,713.88; 1O to $2,370.13; and 1P to $5,067.99; and finally, 1S to $526.42.
Okay, then that'll be the order without objection. And do we have cards on the remaining items on 1?
Yes, there are cards on item 1.
All right, we'll go ahead and hold that on the desk for now. Next item, please.
And then items 1 through 21 are items noticed for a public hearing, and there were cards on item 1.
And are there cards on the other items?
Yes, on item 5, 20 and 21.
20 and 21. Okay, we'll go ahead and hold 5, 20, and 21 for cards. Members, Mr. Krikorian.
Just wanted to make sure, in all of that, that item 1AA was called special, please. Thank you.
Okay. Members, are there, yes?
Call items 23 and 24 special?
Okay, as soon as we get to those, we'll come back to those in a minute. So items, again, colleagues, 1 through 21, seeing no other specials, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, those are approved, and now we're going to go ahead and go on to items 22 through 28, and with those, we've got requests from Mr. Harris-Dawson on 23 and 24 to be held on the desk, so we'll go ahead and hold those for now. For 23 and 24, other items, please, members, anything?
And, Mr. President, on items 27 and 28, the committee reports have been submitted and circulated for consideration.
Excellent, thank you very much. And so with those, colleagues, we'll go ahead and open the roll on 22, 25, 26, 27, and 28, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 29 through 57 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll for consideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, so those items are now before us. Do we have any cards?
Yes, there are cards on 29, 37, 39, 41, 43, 45, 47, and 57. And additionally, there is a request to hold item 55 on the desk for a substitute motion.
And there's a request to hold item 50 already as well, so we'll hold item 50 on that. Mr. Coetz.
I'd like to call 49 special.
49. Okay, colleagues, any other items? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Sax, if you're going to yell out and disrupt this meeting again, we're going to ask you to leave. That's yelling out, and we're going to ask you to leave. Try it one more time. I don't think so. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those balance of those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Great, thank you very much. Those are approved. Next items, please. Yes, Mr. Blumenfield.
Fourth with, please. Item 40, fourth with, please.
Item 40, fourth with, without objection, that'll be the order per Mr. Blumenfield. Thank you very much. Next items, please.
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Our item's called special.
Okay, we're going to start off first with some of the comment cards. We're going to go ahead and go with Mr. Previn for three minutes on multiple cards. Mr. Previn, you've got cards on 20, 21, 23, 24, 25, 27, 28, 39, 41, 43, 45, 47, 57. Three minutes on all of those items with a maximum of one minute per item. Mr. Previn. As you're coming up, I'm going to remind the speakers to stick to the items. If you do not stick to the items for which you filled out cards, then you'll forfeit the rest of your time. Thank you.
Okay, good morning, sir. It is Eric Previn from CD12. I'm not sure where you got that list, but I appreciate it. Item number 23, sir, is your treasured ACE program. This is a program where you have requested that the Administrative Citation Enforcement Program be applied here. What I was concerned about, and I don't know if Harris-Dawson had the same concern, these are minor fines like $25 and $50, but it is grappling with our homelessness crisis, and I thought we have been schooled on that before by Carol Sobel and others. I just do not understand how that helps us at all. Item number 25, sir, is something called GSD Reform. I'm naming it that, but the General Services Department, our treasured department, have a lot of real estate holdings for the city. They manage our city property and our city property, our surplus property, and they have been working diligently with Krikorian and Martinez, who are fond of giving away city property to various colleagues and treasured partners, and what they're doing is looking at ways we can improve this process. Obviously, Mr. Wesson, Mr. Harris, everybody likes to give away city surplus property, and this year we made it so that the proceeds from that sales or ways that we give it away will go to some kind of affordable housing, but it was not clear, and they didn't let the public address it. Item 28, thank you, Mr. Wesson, Mr. Krikorian, if it's the two of you once again upping by 5,000, the per neighborhood council take, it's $480,000 across all the neighborhood councils, it's a lot of money, the neighborhood councils are your treasured partners. Item number 39 is the very confusing but important outside counsel. We have spent $19 million on outside councils, what I gathered, over the last, through the second quarter of 2016. That is an enormous amount of money to hire attorneys, and we have only been doing a so-so job at improving things once we are sued for them brutally. Item number 41 is Prop K. This is a voter initiative that had put money together for various parks and rec activities, and I just want to clarify, Prop K, it does not stand for Krikorian, therefore, taking $7 million and jamming it into a already $3 million Studio City project is not a good use of the overflow money for incomplete projects. Mr. Harris-Dawson has multiple park poor situations in his district, it is the poorest of all the districts, that money should be diverted to that group, and I am obviously a Studio City resident, but I say that with a straight face. Item number 45 is the National Endowment of the Arts are giving $100,000 to Pacoima, so I'd like to say thank you to the national government and also to whoever helped with that. Item number 57 is Mr. Englander's been in Hamburg and Copenhagen with Sadio, Price, and who was the other lucky contestant? Mr. Blumenfield, thank you. I hope you had a nice trip. Maybe you were working on getting the World Police and Fire Games to come to Los Angeles. That is what item 57 is about, and it is appreciated, I think. I'm not 100% sure that we need additional law enforcement activities beyond public safety, but maybe. Item number 20 is Weezer, you never see this, denying 7-Eleven a liquor license. So this obviously is something like... Thank you.
Thank you very much. Your time is up. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to go on to the next card, and just so you know, Mr. Previn, that was also for general public comment card, which you did not have a card in for today, so your time is up for the meeting. With that, as I call this next speaker, I see a phenomenal turnout here today in council chambers, and I just want to sort of take an inventory for a moment and ask, because there are many familiar faces, but there are a lot of new ones as well, colleagues here today. How many here, this is the first time actually in city council chambers? Wow, okay, fantastic, well, welcome. Thank you very much for your participation. Appreciate that. With that, we also have something that is one of the most beautiful things in this country, one of the most phenomenal protections that we have on our freedom, and that is the ability to speak freely. That is the freedom of speech, and with that, we respect that greatly here in these chambers, but it also allows and affords you to say almost anything, and you're about to hear some of that. And so I just wanted to let you know that as you might hear things you may or may not disagree or agree with, it's the wonderful thing about this country is that you have the ability to do that. It's the simple fact that you can express yourself, and we have soldiers that have fought for and paid the ultimate sacrifice to this country to afford us that very freedom, that we have people right now fighting overseas for us that are going to ultimately pay that ultimate sacrifice to allow them to say whatever they want, and so we respect that, and we worship that freedom. And with that, I'd like to call up Mr. Walsh on item 20, 29, 37, 57, for three minutes. Mr. Walsh. John?
Good morning, John. Good morning. John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, at J. Walsh Confidential. For the record, we had to sue in federal court, and Judge...
Stay on the topic, please, topic. Stay on the topic, or you're going to lose your time.
Let me tell you, let's start with number, keep your voice down, please, number 29, and this is my three minutes of public comment, which was cut down from five. 29, Mr. Michael Newhouse, West LA Area Planning Commission, 100% in favor, we checked, he has no record for possession of kiddie porn. As you know, someone who came up here that they voted for unanimously is now in prison for kiddie porn, and that's the kind of things they don't want me to say, and not the four-letter words. Number 20, 57? 57 concerns the CRA. They laughed at me in 1970s, oh, the police fire games is 57. We do not want to spend one dime. We're going to have the police fire and fire games in Los Angeles? Where's Black Lives Matter? We're going to bring the whole country, the whole world to LA so they can see the vicious, vile racism that we have in this city, because if you're white, that's all right, if you're black, stand back, if you're brown, you cannot stick around. I'm telling you right now, this police fire, of course, I'm sure the LA Times and all the racists will go out there, they're going to have sports like Pin the Tail on the Negro and other type sports like that. Number 37 is, and incidentally, number 37 hasn't been called, so it's a violation of the Brown Act to hear on 37 until it has been called, but we're going to have to take you to court on that, and we will take you to court on that, and we will win in court as we win every single time. Rent escrow account program, yes, you do a good job on renting. When they do a good job, I say it. I'm not one of those old guys, here are a bunch of crooks. When they do a good job, I say they do a good job. And, Ms. ... And Mr. Sadio is the best of all of them, but he's not perfect, although he thinks he is. Number thirty-seven, and this is number twenty, number twenty. Number twenty hasn't been called. This is out of order. They should not be calling us at the beginning of the meeting. The Brown Act...
Stay on the subject. Not on the council roll, stay on number twenty.
Stay on the subject. It's public comment.
All right. Now you have one more minute for general public comment, Mr. Walsh.
Okay. Number one, no on Measure M. No on Measure M. I just want you people who are like my grandfather, Jewish, who live west of La Raya, this is about gentrifying your neighborhood. It's about a huge amount of freeway widening. They're telling you it's all about rides for the minorities. Incidentally, this is the only city in America where all of public transit is 80% minority. I'm telling you right now, no on Measure M. Half-cent sales tax, $75 a person, that's $300 this year forever, forever. It's the eternity tax. Billions of dollars for freeway widening and for development, and it's only about development. That's all it's about.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. All right. Thank you. Your time's up for the day. Thank you for being on good behavior today. All right. So one card on item fifty-seven. Alex Davis. Alex?
Hi. Good morning, council members. My name is Alex Davis. I am the Legislative Affairs Manager at the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, ViCA. We represent over 400 Valley businesses and nonprofits, and thank you for your time today. It's a very exciting time to be in the Valley. In just a few years, we are preparing to welcome thousands of Angelenos and visitors to the Valley as Los Angeles hosts the 2024 Olympic Games. And as we have seen, when large-scale events utilize the existing facilities in the Valley, everyone wins. We ask that, should Los Angeles host the 2017 World and Police Fire Games, that the Valley be considered to host a few of the activities. From our world-class recreational facilities and our schools, we believe that the Valley showcases the very best of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And seeing no other cards on fifty-seven, we're going to go ahead, colleagues, and open the roll on fifty-seven. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That's approved. Thank you very much. With that, we're going to go ahead and call up Arnold Sacks. Arnold, as you're making your way up here, fifty-seven also, can we go ahead and move that forth with? All right. Without objection, that'll be the order on fifty-seven. Arnold, as you're making your way up here, we did find a card on you for thirty-eight, so colleagues, we're going to go ahead and reconsider item thirty-eight, so he can speak on that. If we can open the roll for reconsideration on item thirty-eight for Arnold Sacks, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
All right. So that's before us as well, so you can speak on that now, too.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. And thirty-eight refers to the Franchise Tax Board. And you should play close attention to what the Franchise Tax Board does. It sends sales tax revenue back to the county and the city. So there's an interesting thing you heard about Measure M for Metro. Franchise Sales Tax Board sends back funding for Prop A and Prop C, which are two other sales taxes you pay for transportation. And then according to the Watts Tribune, two articles from April of 2015 and April of 2016, Franchise Tax Revenue Board sent back to the County of Los Angeles, Metro, $860 million for Prop C and $740 million for Prop A, both half-cent sales tax. And they did it two years in a row. So you have to ask yourself a question. Why is the Franchise Tax Board sending back a differential of $120 million? And why is Metro accepting it?
Next item, please. That was one minute per item.
I'm talking about the Franchise Tax Board, sir.
One item, one minute per item. Next item.
So you need to ask questions about that. Parks funding, item forty-seven refers to parks funding, the county proposition park funds from 1992 and '96, which I've talked about also, that you hear so many messages about LA being parked poor. There's a million parcels of property in LA that pay that parcel tax, and yet LA sees zilch. This is some minimum amount of money from the county. Where does the rest of the money go? And CRA, oh, I could talk more, why not? Sure. So where, the county wants to give you to endorse another parks proposition to get more money, but no guarantees how much of that money will come to the city again. And if it's not spent, it returns back to the county as funds for them to use as they wish. CRA, CRA, remember those three letters. So they have an affordable rental agreement. If you might have read the newspapers this past week about the school board, LAUSD built some affordable homes, affordable housing rental, $1,700, over $1,700. That is the median amount of rent downtown LA. Now, if that's 30% of your income a month, that means you're making over $5,000 a month. There's a story in today's newspaper, the Watts Times, construction jobs available, $45,000 a year. The LAUSD homes they built were for teachers with a salary of $50,000 a year. They couldn't afford to live in LA. So all this crap you hear about affordable housing, just remember, it's just crap. Public comment.
All right. Thank you. You've got one minute for public comment.
Housing. In the newspaper on October 21st, they presented, the LA Times, that wonderful rag, presented a measure, how LA measure would affect the homeless and taxpayers. And they start out discussing this homeless initiative, how it affects city of Los Angeles. But what's fascinating, at the very end, would Proposition HHH and homelessness in LA. Well, according to this, it says, according to the analysis, at least 14,000 people will always be homeless in Los Angeles County. So you start out talking about the city, and you end up talking about the county, and that's how you need to follow the money. In this instance, they'll supposedly go to the city, but the county will get services. And sacrificing for freedom, you call out, you lose your time. If you don't stay on the subject, you lose your time. They may have sacrificed their lives for freedom, but they didn't sacrifice their lives to elect assholes into office. Keep that in mind. And this homeless plan and this food plan, if you don't mind eating crap, come to city council more often.
And we're going to go ahead and go into presentations now, so Mr. Coretts, I believe the floor is yours. So we'll go ahead and go into presentations.
Mr. Coretts?
Well, good morning, Mr. President and colleagues. I'm very excited to be here with this crowd for the sixth annual Food Day celebration. Thank you to everybody for your presence. I'd also like to invite my colleagues, Jose Weezer and Karen Price, up to the podium as they will also be sharing remarks. I want to recognize our colleague, David Rue, whose team did a lot of work to make Food Day a success this year, although he ultimately couldn't be with us today due to the passing of his father. Our thoughts are with Mr. Rue and his family, and thank you to his staff for all their efforts. We appreciate it. And if I seem even more long-winded than usual, it's because I'll be doing his part and my part on this. Food Day is celebrated nationwide each year to raise our awareness of how the food system impacts our lives, our diets and health, the environment, animal welfare, and the economy. In LA, the amazing Los Angeles Food Policy Council brings the diverse good food movement to council chambers to help us move forward on progressive food policies and to recognize community leadership. We have with us today good food champions from every council district, as well as representatives from city departments implementing the good food purchasing policy, which I'll talk more about in a few minutes. And if we can invite all of our good food champions to come up and stand with us as well, that would be great. The theme for this year is food democracy. With a huge election just around the corner, Food Day is an opportunity to reflect on how we bring democracy to life every day and not just at the polls. By being in the audience today, each of you are participating in creating a healthy democracy. I encourage all of you to stay engaged in these and other issues and to help keep us accountable for creating more good food policies. I invite my colleagues to keep challenging ourselves to make the policy more inclusive. Now, I'd like to invite my friend and policy brother, Councilmember Jose Weezer, to share remarks on a policy to expand food stamps at LA's farmers' markets.
You know, Mr. Coretts, Mr. Weezer, if I could jump in, we've got a great group. I thought that they were going to actually come and sit or stand next to individual members. Is that not the way that you want to do that? So that, because if so, we got to...
Yeah, maybe in a little while. How's that?
No, then one way or another, so we'll stay this way. I just want all of you, thank you for all that you've done. Just know that my people are going to get special treatment. Mr. Weezer, the floor is yours.
Thank you. They will all go there, up there after this presentation, see if we can all fit up there. Thank you, Council President, and I want to welcome everybody here today to a very special day to continue the discussion about having good quality food and accessible, healthy food to all Angelenos. I want to thank Councilmember Coretts for all he's done on this end. I also want to thank members of the Los Angeles Food Policy Council, Manuel Arts High School, and the LA Leadership Academy High School for coordinating and participating in today's activities. You know, ensuring proper access to healthy and high-quality food is crucial to ending health disparities, particularly for low-income communities and food deserts. According to U.S. Statistics, some 8.5 million Americans, including nearly 3 million children, experience hunger on a daily basis. Many of these people rely on food assistance from local food pantries, soup kitchens, or local emergency food programs. Recently, we recognized CalFresh Awareness Month here in the council. We brought attention to the food assistance programs available to Angelenos from the Department of Public Social Services. During that campaign, one very significant policy was passed by this council. We passed a motion to make it mandatory for farmers' markets in the city of Los Angeles to accept state-issued EBT cards for low-income residents. This motion was unanimously passed by the city council and has been a huge victory in making sure that all Angelenos, no matter their income level, have access to healthy and fresh fruit throughout our great city. We were even able to expedite the process and help farmers' markets apply for the EBT machines by holding a resource fair on the steps of City Hall that resulted in more than 80% voluntary compliance throughout the city of Los Angeles. That's a huge victory. In addition to making it mandatory for farmers' markets to accept EBT, we have also looked into innovative and unconventional ways to invest in creating access to healthy and high-quality foods. I want to thank in particularly all who made that possible, particularly the Los Angeles Food Policy Council in ensuring that more families throughout the city of Los Angeles have access to fruits and vegetables in their local communities. Thank you very much.
Let's give him a round of applause.
And now we'd like to hear from Councilmember Price, who will tell you about the urban agriculture incentive zones that he's working on.
Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Coretts and Weezer, it's a real pleasure to join you this morning, as well as our honorees and advocates for healthy eating in our community. AB 551, or Urban Agricultural Incentive Zones, plain and simply allows property owners to turn their vacant lots into small gardens or farms, while also taking advantage of favorable property tax benefits. I was eager to introduce this motion in council. My office has worked with community organizations, schools, affordable housing developers, to implement community gardens within a ninth district. Urban Ag Zones are going to introduce another tool, another tool in the toolbox to activate our vacant and blighted lots. Think of how we can transform overgrown debris-ridden lots into vibrant green spaces. Nonprofits like the Brotherhood Crusade, who we're going to be honoring today, can use this space to educate our residents on how to care for and cultivate their plants. Families can partner to make readily available fresh produce available at the dinner table. A program like this can have very powerful impacts on our communities. With over 3,000 vacant lots in South Los Angeles alone, the possibilities are endless. And for my colleagues on the council, for any of you who are interested in how to identify these project sites, be assured that the planning department is soon going to be providing each office with an inventory of potential properties for that use. Working with the planning department, building and safety, and the county, and the Food Policy Council, we are committed to devising a user-friendly process that's going to allow property owners to dedicate their land for agricultural uses for at least five years. Today, I'm excited to announce that two weeks ago, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this new ordinance, and it's going to soon be heard in the Plum Committee, which Mr. Weezer chairs, and then we'll be going to the council for final approval. So colleagues, I look forward to working with our friends at the Food Policy Council to implement the first agricultural pilot project in the new ninth district and around our city. Thank you.
And I want to thank both my colleagues for moving forward these important policies this year. I also have a policy motion on today's council agenda regarding the other end of the food system, food waste and composting, which you'll hear about later during the council meeting. Now, let's talk about a different kind of leadership. I'd like to recognize staff within the city of Los Angeles that are working hard to bring good food to Angelenos through our good food purchasing policy. I introduced the motion to create the good food purchasing policy back in 2012 because I knew that the city's purchasing power could have a huge impact on our regional food system in terms of environmental sustainability, animal welfare, fair labor, and local economic opportunity, as well as the health of residents served by the city food programs. So let's give our good staff that have done this good work a big hand. This policy was also introduced as a mayoral executive directive, and our current mayor, Eric Garcetti, has done much to ensure its success. So here to talk about it, from Mayor Garcetti's sustainability team, is his deputy chief sustainability officer, Lauren Faber.
Good morning, and thank you to the council for inviting me here, and thank you for the leadership that you, Councilmember Coretts, and Councilmembers Weezer and Price have shown on good food policy, as well as the Food Policy Council, really, I think, blazing a trail and providing a national model for what it means to prioritize good, healthy, equitable food access for all. This is a really exciting day. You know, not only do we have such a wonderful set of partners out with us today, and we have a lot to celebrate, and there's great food outside that we can be enjoying throughout the day, but it also is really exciting to us because in Mayor Garcetti's Sustainable City Plan, we prioritized the access of healthy food for all Angelenos, and also prioritized ensuring that we, in our purchasing choices, were reflecting those values to ensure that healthy, locally grown, sustainable food was available to everyone. And so what does that mean? That means the 4,500 hot meals served daily in our senior centers, it means the over 200,000 meals that are served every summer to kids in need, and that also includes the wonderful food and the millions of dollars spent on healthy, good food at the Greek Theater as well. Those are just a few examples, but also ensuring that our most food insecure populations are supported by these programs. And by doing that, that provides a lot of economic opportunity in the region as well, and that's something that we've also recognized in our... and our partners have worked to support. This means supporting local farmers. This means supporting responsible food businesses who treat their workers fairly, who treat animals humanely, and who are conscientious of the natural environment as well. So through our purchasing power, we are making, we are really, really showing our values, and that's something that's very important to us as well. So I'd like for the departments, you know you're being recognized, to start making your way up if you can, but we'd like to recognize five departments that have shifted their food policy to really embed these values. The good food purchasing policy was adopted by the city back in 2012, and it really was thanks to the council's leadership for ensuring that this happened. And as you say, Mayor Garcetti is extremely committed to continuing the implementation of the good food purchasing policy. So I'd like to recognize these five departments that are prioritizing and ensuring that Angelinos are receiving healthy, sustainable, humane, local food. So first, first like to recognize the Department of Aging. And accepting the award on the behalf of Department of Aging is Laura Trejo and Bertha Hurd. Thank you very much. Next, on behalf of the Department of Recreation and Parks, Vicky Israel and Matthew Rudnick, and our partner at the Greek Theater Premier Foods, which includes Charles Bretner and Veronica Quintero. Thank you so much for everything you're doing. Next, I'd like to recognize the Department of Water and Power. And here to accept the mayor's certificate is Erin Gross, Deputy Chief Sustainability Officer at LADWP. And also, an exciting acknowledgement we have today is to recognize the Los Angeles World Airports. They have just adopted good food purchasing policy this year, are beginning, and are beginning to implement it. Think about what that means, the millions of passengers coming in and out of the airport and seeing how things are changing and what kind of food LA is putting forward, put its best foot forward. So on behalf of LAX, we have Tammy Crosson and Bennett Sanchez. Thank you so much for your work on this. And finally, we want to recognize our colleagues at the Los Angeles Unified School District. LAUSD adopted the good food purchasing policy soon thereafter the city back in 2012, and has been an extremely important partner in ensuring that the 600,000 daily meals that they serve are meeting these standards. And they've also been a partner with our summer program to ensure that youth have access to healthy food and lunches all year round, not just during the school year. So I'd like to, there's a number of folks up from LAUSD here today, but I'd like to recognize Regional Manager Manish Singh for all your hard work. Thank you so much. So on behalf of the city of Los Angeles and Mayor Garcetti, I really want to commend each and every one of you, all of you that are here today, including the departments, for your important role in expanding the number of Angelinos who can be enjoying the sustainable, local, healthy food that we all want to be enjoying. Thank you so much. Do you want me to read the whereas? All the way through?
All right, I think what we're going to do next is ask all of the good food champions to stand next to their council member around the horseshoe. So why don't you all head in that direction? If your council member isn't present or is up here, please feel free to stay here at the podium with me. Yes. And I think we'll start with the council members that are up here at the podium. And I'm going to start with Lee Wallach and the Motor Avenue Improvement Association for their work in creating the city's first parklet with food growing on it, for its ongoing and innovative seven different urban gardens in the community and local schools, which educate our children and neighbors on the importance of the shared, our shared future with nutrition, sustainability, and community cooperation, and for our weekly Motor Avenue Farmers Market, which provides fresh produce to the surrounding neighborhood and has a homeless nutrition program element that's part of that. So let's give the Motor Avenue Improvement Association a big hand.
Thank you very much, Mr. Corretts. And I'm also proud today to be able to select El Vaquero Restaurant in Alserino. The honorary mayor over there, Ed Santillan, led the clap. He's our CD14 Good Food Champion. Owner Malakias Vasquez is a 33-year resident of Alserino and opened El Vaquero in 2003. El Vaquero is a family restaurant run by Mr. Vasquez and his wife, Inma, with the help of their three children, utilizing recipes from the native Jalisco, Mexico, including their specialty tortas ahogadas. El Vaquero has become one of the best Mexican restaurants in CD14, even garnering a great review in the Los Angeles Times that they proudly hang on their wall. El Vaquero has become a favorite in the Alserino community, not only for the delicious food, but for their generosity. They consistently donate food to a variety of causes and events in the community. And all that would be enough to be honored here today, but they have really led by example in creating healthier options for the Alserino community. Earlier this year, El Vaquero joined a list of LA County restaurants participating in a healthy eating program by offering their local, their popular dishes in multiple serving sizes to give their customers the choice of healthier, smaller portions. Kids meals at their restaurant now automatically come with fruits and vegetables, and the program also encourages other healthy eating options, such as the reduction of sugary beverages and deep-fried foods. El Vaquero is the only restaurant in Alserino participating in this program, and that is why we are honoring them here today. Thank you, Mr. Vasquez. Thank you to El Vaquero, and thank you for leading by example. Thank you so much. Felicidades.
It's my distinct pleasure to recognize our good food champion for the New Ninth, the Brotherhood Crusade, under the leadership of Ms. Sharice Brimon Weaver. And today, she's accompanied by Curtis Silvers, George Weaver, her husband, and Chairman Danny Bakewell. Let's give them all a hand, please. Let's give them a hand.
Sharice, Mr. Price, bring up, we can't even see Sharice. Come on. Get next to it.
There you go.
All right.
There you go. For those of you serving underserved areas like mine, you know that nonprofits not only play a crucial role in our community, but they also act sometimes as a shadow government. The Brotherhood Crusade was founded almost 50 years ago in South LA for the vision of improving the quality of life for low-income, underserved, disenfranchised individuals. Sharice Brimon Weaver, president and CEO, has more than 25 years of experience organizing and working in the community. And although the makeup of the community has changed from African-American to primarily Black and Latino, the Brotherhood Crusade's commitment to the community has not wavered. Presently, the Crusade offers a myriad of critical services to the community, ranging from vocational training, financial literacy, STEM programming, and mentoring programs for young men of color. But today, we're here to recognize the Brotherhood Crusade and Sharice for their work in addressing food and health disparities in the South Los Angeles region. We know that obesity plagues the African-American and Latino communities at almost twice the rate of our Caucasian counterparts. Lack of access to fresh foods, coupled with lack of open space that we see in the more affluent areas of town, means that our community members are being denied the opportunity to live a healthy lifestyle, making our community members more susceptible to diabetes, stroke, and heart disease. Understanding the crisis that our South LA community faces, Sharice and her team were up to the challenge to address the problem with a dual-pronged tactic to educate the community on healthy eating and to promote sports programming of our youth, touching thousands and thousands of residents in South Los Angeles. In 2013, the Brotherhood Crusade partnered with the Department of Public Health to address these issues by increasing access and consumption of healthy foods and increasing opportunities for our youth to engage in physical activities. Since that time, the Crusade has been instrumental in educating our community about healthy eating by partnering with our local youth to provide healthy food and beverage demonstrations, spreading the word to thousands of South Los Angeles residents. The Brotherhood Crusade has also successfully partnered with the American Heart Association, the Jamie Oliver Foundation, and the Jamie Oliver Foundation, to implement teaching gardens in our local schools, which not only provides community gardens in our schools, but provides programming to teach our youth and their families about the importance of fruits and vegetables and how to introduce them into their daily diets. The Brotherhood Crusade also pioneered the Soccer for Success Program to thousands of local youth, giving them an opportunity to participate in a sports league for free. Many of these youth would not have had the opportunity to participate in soccer leagues due to financial hardships, but they now experience the multifaceted benefits, including physical activity, good sportsmanship, and of course, the promotion of healthy eating with nutritious snacks during the game and during practice times. So members, and members of our community, it's an honor to recognize the Brotherhood Crusade under the leadership of Sharice Brimon Weaver for their outstanding nutritional programming in this community, making sure that we keep the New Ninth healthy. Thank you.
And now, on behalf of David Rue, who is not with us today for CD4, I'd like to recognize Rich Armis, who is the market manager of the Toluca Lake Farmers Market. He was the first to join EBT, or food stamps, at a farmer's market, and so we recognize him for that important step. So thank you so much.
Congratulations.
And now, let's go around the horseshoe and do it starting here with Mr. Harris Dawson, and all the way around with your food champions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Corretts, and all of our colleagues who helped bring this to us today. And I want to first recognize the leader of our food justice movement here in the city of Los Angeles, Ms. Claire Phlox at the Food Policy Council, who's helping us, helping Los Angeles blaze a trail in food justice like we did with indoor smoking and quality air. And we're so grateful for her service and all that she's done on this big issue. I'm proud today to celebrate, from the Eighth Council District, one of the leaders of our Crenshaw Farmers Market, Marie Elise DeMarco. She's the market manager for the Baldwin Hills Crenshaw Farmers Market. After a successful career in television and the entertainment industry, Mr. Bloomingfeld, Ms. Martinez, you might recognize her. She was on your favorite show, A Different World. She played Letty, the friend of one of the main characters. After that show ended, she moved back to South Los Angeles where she purchased a home in 2009. She became active in the food justice movement with community health councils and founded the Sola Food Co-op and helped create co-chairs, seeds, and helped create and co-chair the Seeds of Carver Urban Farm Collective, and became manager of Seela's Crenshaw Farmers Market in January 2013. In that time, she began publishing a newsletter and worked to bring more farmers to the market and curated the farmers' market so that the folks that were there were very, very high-quality and exemplary of what the community deserved. In that time, 38 different nonprofits and community organizations helped lobby to bring Market Match online, six months earlier than it was supposed to be. Not only has our farmers' market there at the Crenshaw Market vastly increased, but the community members know now that that's a place where you can go and get fresh fruits and vegetables every Saturday morning, right there on Crenshaw Boulevard. She's a big advocate for her community and knows that there is not justice and there is not freedom without food justice and food freedom. She truly believes that food, believes that food access equals community success. And so I want everybody to join me in thanking and recognizing Marie Elise DeMarco of the Crenshaw Farmers Market.
All right, thank you very much. While my two could not be here today, I do want to speak and thank them, but I want to thank all of you first. And thinking about and looking at food justice and what it means, it's interesting to me, Mr. President, that today just so happens to be on the council agenda and with this presentation, we're talking about food, water, and shelter, really the cornerstone of what's important to each one of us each and every day. And this is a subject that is near and dear to my heart as a child who grew up on food stamps. And in fact, before the EBT card was first created and before the food stamp program known as CalFresh that we have now, which didn't come in until about 1977. So I went several years on learning to make and eating cheese a thousand different ways that used to come in a cardboard box. And so this is near and dear to my heart. You talk about things coming full circle. I was part of a discussion and sat around a room 10 years ago when we talked about creating a program called Citrus Sunday, which is now taken off, that was created out of our council office and working with Food Forward and many others. And today, I want to give a big shout-out to Karen Marglia, who Karen began working with Food Forward in 2014 after retiring from Cal State University Northridge. And she was the first volunteer to actually receive the triple crown. And that is a, that means that in three volunteer roles with Food Forward, she was a pick leader with fruit harvests, a glean team leader at farmers markets, a community ambassador at volunteer fairs and outreach events, and really spread the word and got people involved and engaged. So this quarter, Karen has led 27 picks, helped harvest over 5,400 pounds of produce, and represented Food Forward at schools, fairs, public events, and served monthly as a market glean leader. So it's people like Karen that we celebrate and give thanks to today, as well as my second honoree, Eileen Parker. She began volunteering in 1978, packing brown-bag lunches on Sundays for LA family housing shelters. For 27 years, Eileen has worked as a volunteer at the Zapolvita United Methodist Church and for their hot meal program, and has continued to do so much with Vic, our Valley Interfaith Council, in leading hunger walks and working with the Church World Services, and done so much. So I want to thank her, but also want to give a special shout-out, if I can, since I have the mic, because there's one of those leaders that actually walks amongst us, and that's our colleague, Councilmember Gil Sadio. Gilbert, when he was in the legislature, actually led the program here in California that we know today, that brought in the EBT card, that actually, the CalFresh program that is so successful today, he was instrumental in. So little did he know that while he was up there fighting for us, it was helping my family and so many others here in Los Angeles that would go on to feed so many today that wouldn't have access to fresh foods. And so I'm thankful for your leadership that you bring here from that and have created those programs. Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, first of all, let me thank my dear colleague for that acknowledgement, but you'll remember that it was under your leadership as the speaker that we made the transition from the food stamps to the food stamps program. transition from the food stamps to the EBT program with the CalFresh, with the healthy families, that all of that took place under your leadership as speaker. You gave me the honor of chairing the Health and Human Services of the Budget Committee, and that's where that transition was made, with some opposition, with some concern about security and fraud. But at the end of the day, we knew that it was more important to make sure that people had access to food. And it's from that environment that we were able to make those accomplishments. Ironically, we're here today to do this. Who knew that 16 years later that we would be here doing this? Let me transition to acknowledge a group called With Love Market and Cafe. Its CEO and founder and genius, Andrew McDowell is here, and his colleague Carla Vasquez. We have a district, my district is characterized by being intensely immigrant and with extreme, in this city, extreme poverty. It's a very low-income district, as has happened throughout many urban areas in the country. Retail markets have abandoned the urban centers, and so it's difficult for people to get access to quality food. That's one thing. It's more difficult if you want to get some designer food, if you want to get some nice packaging, if you want to get some nice food that's healthy, that's contemporary, that's reflective of what's happening for the mainstream, very difficult, very challenging. It just does not exist, except at one place in my district, and that is in Pico Union, its most southern edge of the district. As you go south on Hoover, as you begin to head towards USC, we have this oasis called With Love Market and Cafe. Now, my staff comes to me every day with great ideas and vision and to let me know about what's happening in the district. So, it's actually, do we have the, it's actually been featured in our magazine, opportunity to showcase our magazine. We've talked about it already, and the publisher of the magazine came to me one day and says, "You've got to go to this place. It's really great. It's really you. You'll really like it. It's really something really special." And I'm like, "Okay, whatever." You know, I have particular tastes. I live by myself. I, you know, very particular about what I eat. So, I was like, "Okay, that's fine." I went there, and it's amazing. It's amazing because it's a community center. It's very cool. It's got incredible colors. Its design and its layout is very inviting. It's got this really cool place to hang out in the back. And then, it's got incredible food, shakes and smoothies and, you know, food made right there for you. It is something really special, and it's a product of this love and commitment that comes from its CEO and its entire team. They're very special. They do things that would seem difficult as a business model. They pay a living wage. They make sure everybody has healthcare. They hire locally. Seventy-five percent of its employees come from the local neighborhood. They are just a model of what retail business should be in this city. It's what it was, and with their current presence and with their planned expansion, this is what the future of Los Angeles will look like, Mr. President. And with that, I want to acknowledge With Love Market and Cafe, Andrew McDowell, and Carla Vasquez.
Thank you. I'm standing in for our colleague, Joe Buscaino, of the 15th Council District, to represent their Good Food Champion, which is located in Watts. It is a local fast-food restaurant. We're joined today by Lydia Friend, the General Manager, and Terry Smith, the Manager. Let's give them a round of applause in their beautiful local t-shirts. Watts is one of our, one of the parts of our city that is at the epicenter of the food injustice policy. A study taken in 2013 showed that the life expectancy or lifespan from someone living in Watts versus someone living in Bel Air was about 13 years. Someone in Watts lived 13 years less. Even when you control for homicides, even when you control for homicides, take all the homicide victims out, that number doesn't decrease by very much. And so, there are lots of contributing factors to this, but one of them is access to healthy food at an affordable price. Chefs Roy Choi and Daniel Patterson dreamt up the idea of local, the idea that you could have fast food at an affordable price in a community made by members of the community that everyone could afford and enjoy and that tastes good to young people and older people alike. They wanted to make sure that it was affordable, that people learned the culinary skills that you need to compete in the job market, and so they worked to get investors and build local immediately. Once they built and opened last year, the community warmly embraced them. In fact, all of Southern California embraced them. It is now a destination in Southern California if you are a foodie, as Roy Choi is an internationally-recognized chef. We want to thank them for what they've contributed, and I want to let everybody know, Mr. Wesson, this is fast food that you can eat past the age of 40. It's a lot of fast food when you get 40. It doesn't feel quite the same. At local, you walk away feeling great. It's an affordable price. It's a great community experience, and we're very, very honored on behalf of Councilmember Joe Buscaino to honor local in Watts. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Coretts. In the activist tradition, I was notified that I needed to let everybody know, especially those at the Food Policy Council, that locals' application to accept EBT was denied. So, we need to all work on that to make sure you can use your EBT cards at local, because their food is healthier than some of the other places I've seen them take CalFresh. So, we're going to work on that. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I don't want everybody in the shot. Okay. Everybody in the shot? Awesome. All right. So, I've actually got half dozen, seven folks here with me today, all from one organization, but I want to make sure they all get a shout out by name. Crystal, where is Crystal? Right here. Crystal Gonzalez. Eli Tiscareño. Do I get that? Come on. Let's, I want you to be in the scene in the spotlight. Jose Zacarez. There's Jose. Emily Ortega. Emily's right here. Gally Lopez, right back here. Michaela Rodriguez. There we go. And Maria Sanchez. Excellent. I want all seven of them to be recognized because they're part of a phenomenal program. We've all probably heard of the American Friends Services Committee, the Quakers, national organization, spiritual organization that works so hard to promote peace. Here in Los Angeles, they have a program particular to Los Angeles, and it's called Roots for Peace. It started in 2008, really took off in 2009, and it took off in South LA and in Mar Vista Gardens, which is the public housing complex, the underserved community in my district. And it started as a group of high schoolers. But the purpose of Roots for Peace was to use gardening and to use food as an opportunity to teach people about wellness and about health and to grow and strengthen community and strengthen neighborhood. And it started in Mar Vista Gardens as a group of high schoolers, and it has since grown out. It has sprouted like the fruits and vegetables they plant into something broader and includes residents of all generations at Mar Vista Gardens. And it's been an important step towards building peace in the neighborhood and in the community. So, they build a community garden at Mar Vista Gardens, and they give the families their access to healthy foods right there in their neighborhoods. You know, there are a lot of places on the west side where there's Whole Foods and there's Bristol Farms and there's fancy supermarkets. In the area near Mar Vista Gardens, it's very underserved and does not like the rest of the west side. So, this is a huge service, providing something that wasn't there in the community. Through the Food Growers Network program, 16 of the Mar Vista Gardens residents participated in a year-long urban agriculture training. They're now using what they learned in that program to support a vibrant and a productive community garden in the housing complex. It serves really in Mar Vista Gardens as a hub for healthy food production, for recipe sharing, and really very important for community building. It's an amazing and an inspiring program, and I'm so glad to have them in my district, and I'm so very honored to have them here today. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Coretts, for organizing this. Is my microphone on? Yes. So, I stand here with Reverend Rand Reasoner and Debbie Decker. They are with the Prince of Peace Episcopal Church. And we talk about Good Food Champions. These are folks and a church that really brings food to everyone and to the folks who really need it in the community. Since the 1960s, Prince of Peace has been a vital part of the San Fernando Valley and in particular, Woodland Hills. And one of the attributes that makes them so special is their untiring devotion to providing food to the less fortunate members of our community. In 1985, Prince of Peace Church began the West Valley Food Pantry as part of its ministry. They began running out of the Prince of Peace Church, serving homeless individuals and children. They reached out to other denominations, not just within their own church, but other religious organizations to expand the food pantry and build a coalition across the entire San Fernando Valley. They have done yeoman's work in so many ways. When they began 30 years ago, they were only able to serve a few families a week. Today, they serve about 3,000 people and 26,000 meals every single month. I know, I have volunteered with them. We have served meals to folks, and I can tell you by the smile on people's faces when you bring them a meal, folks who have had some rough times, what a difference it can make in people's lives. But that's not all. The Prince of Peace also has a large community vegetable garden and an orchard of 125 trees, fruit trees. And they incorporate this bounty of their orchard and their garden into the meals that they serve to the homeless. And on every second and fourth Saturday night of each month, they host a Healthy Heart Community Dinner. Prince of Peace understands that everyone has a unique story, and it is our collective responsibility to treat all of our residents with respect and dignity and to build a healthier society. Their mantra is, "No one goes away hungry." And I can say that they not only serve folks in the community, they are good neighbors in the community. They are in a residential area so close to where I live, I can walk there, in fact, right across the street from the preschool where my kids went, and they're serving all of these meals right in a residential area, and they're doing it as members of the community in a caring way that brings the community together. So, I'm very proud of the work that you all do and have done. The Prince of Peace light shines brightly in Woodland Hills and throughout the city of Los Angeles, and that's why they are the 3rd District Food Champions this year. So, congratulations to both of you.
It was my fault. I didn't turn the thing on. Anyway, now, we're turned on. I want to thank Mr. Coretts and Mr. Price and was it Mr. Weezer? Who was all with you? Mr. Weezer for bringing us today. It's important that we have this conversation and that we honor all of the individuals that are here today. But to me, it's kind of special. I have the owners of These Cafe in my district. These Cafe is a restaurant on Adams Boulevard. You know, it has always amazed me that in the community for so many years that I've represented, many of us, we'd have to go outside of our districts to have a healthy breakfast, lunch, or dinner. And it would amaze me because we eat healthy too. We like coffee too. We like everything that other folk like to live in the valley on the west side. We love that. We love healthy. And so, it's good for me to have this Claudia, I mean Claudia and her husband Hector here with me today, the owners of These Cafe. And they have a very healthy, balanced diet that you can get seven days a week. When they started this business, like I said, it's on West Adams and Hauser in my district. It was just the two of them. Now, they employ about 40 people. They started out with one restaurant. Now, they have three. Restaurant business is probably one of the toughest businesses to get into, but they were not going to be denied. They were going to make sure that their restaurant was a success. They were one of the trendsetters in my district in having sidewalk dining. Now, you can drive through the district that I'm honored to represent and see several restaurants that have sidewalk dining. And again, in speaking to Hector here, his refusal to fail is part of who he is. He's from, his people are from Oaxaca, Oaxaca, and for those of you in Mexico, and they were the one people that when invaded by the Spanish, they could not be defeated. So, they know how to fight against the odds. They know how to take a losing situation and make it a winning situation. And I'm just glad to have with me Hector and his wife Claudia from These Cafe. They have some of the greatest organic coffee, teas, pressed cold, what is it? Pressed fruit juice, pressed juice, cold juice. Anyway, apples and ice, good stuff. But anyway, please join me in welcoming and giving a large round of applause, applause to my honoree, These Cafe on Adams.
Am I on? Terrific. Well, first of all, let me just thank Food Policy Council for your great work in this important endeavor, and also all the honorees today who put your heart and soul into making sure that Angelenos, no matter who they are, where they're from, or what their income level is, has access to fresh, healthy food. Thank you all and congratulations. My honoree today is Joshua Jose of Tribal Cafe in the heart of historic Filipino town. They're at Temple between Belmont and Union. If you haven't gone to Tribal Cafe, you must. So, Tribal Cafe is a cultural institution in historic Filipino town. Their mission has always been to spread awareness of healthy food and good health. They also provide a space for community meetings and musicians, poets, and comedians that are developing their skills. Joshua believes in community building, and he opens his place up for anyone who wants to meet there. And recently, we did a community walk, and Joshua was part of the community walk, and a lot of people went to the cafe right afterward. The Tribal Cafe experiences an exciting interaction of healthy food options, responsible consumption, environmental concerns, social responsibility, youth culture, and the general community. Their motto is, "You got a voice, we got a platform," and Joshua lives that every day. I would like to recognize Tribal Cafe as my Good Food Champion on the occasion of Good Food Day in the city of Los Angeles. And Joshua, we thank you for all that you've contributed, not just to the 13th District, but to the culture of Los Angeles with your giving generosity and giving spirit. You are what's best in the city of Los Angeles. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. For those of you who participated in bringing the Good Food Day here to City Council, I'm glad it was mentioned earlier. When I was on the school board, we worked on the good food purchasing policy, which is working really well. Where's my LAUSD family? Are you still here? They're gone, they went back. But I wanted to, can we please give them a big round of applause? I think this district, this school district doesn't always get recognized for their leadership, and unfortunately, you only hear the bad things that happen at the district, but on this particular issue, they were leading in the nation. And for that, I want to thank LAUSD very much for continuing the good work. I want to introduce my good friend Elliot Coon from Cottonwood Urban Farms in Panorama City, where he's the only farmer that we're recognizing here this morning. So I want to give him a big round of applause. Come on over, Elliot. Like I told Elliot when I first met him, and he came to see me over a year ago in the office, I said, "Listen, I don't have a green thumb. I'm a pretty good darn good cook, but I can't grow food and I can't grow anything." But I love the fact that you want to come here and talk to me about your farm that you're growing in the middle of Panorama City. If you're familiar with the valley, you know that we used to have two or three acres of property before the valley started to get developed. Well, we have very few of those types of properties in Panorama City, and they're scattered everywhere. Elliot bought a couple of years ago, a piece of property, I think it sits on, what, two acres? A little over two acres in Panorama City, and he's been cultivating the land and he's built an incredible farm in the middle of Panorama City. So he came over and talked to me about how do we acquire more property like this? And how do we get kids engaged in taking control of their food system, which is so important? So many of us don't know where our food comes from, and I like the fact that Elliot is young, and that he's a farmer, and that he's right in my neighborhood. And so we got them together with Pacoima Beautiful, and now they have food swaps every other Saturday. We got them together with some of the local elementary schools, like Rancho Elementary School. Those parents and those kids come over to the farm on Saturdays and take part of what's going on there. And this is all his leadership, his vision for wanting to teach our kids to take leadership in our food system, which I think is very important. In a community like mine, where a lot of our, you know, we don't have a lot of choices. We're considered a food desert. So a lot of my families don't have another choice but to go to the convenience store or the grocery store down the street. That doesn't necessarily carry fresh produce. So things like urban wood, urban farms, is very important to my district, not only for what it represents, but also for the fact that there is a vision to continue to broaden Elliot's vision and bringing good source of food into my community. And with that, I'd like to introduce Elliot Coon. He is from Cottonwood Urban Farms, and I want to give him a big round of applause. Thank you. He's my friend, the farmer. And I've been out there a couple, I was out there a couple of months ago attempting to farm, it went okay. You know, I think we planted over 20 avocado trees, a number of fruit trees and tomatoes, and the amount of kids that turned out on that Saturday was pretty amazing. So thank you very much, and congratulations.
Colleagues, first, I'd like to thank the Los Angeles Food Policy Council and our colleagues for bringing together these heroes today. Because whenever we do a presentation like this, it's a reminder to all of us that there are so many people out in our great city who, day in and day out, contribute so much to the benefit of others. They toil, they sacrifice, they innovate, they make do with too little in order to help others. And far too often, those people go unnoticed, unrecognized. And when we do presentations like this, it really is an opportunity, not only for us to give recognition to these heroes who are here today, but also remind ourselves of how much good is being done in our city by people who don't ask for a word of thanks or recognition ever. And it happens every day in every corner of this city, and we ought to recognize that and be grateful that we live in this kind of a city, I think. And an example of that is my Good Food Champion for Council District Two, who I'd like to introduce to you, Pastor Domingo Mota, the head pastor of the Winds of Hope Church in Sun Valley. For about a decade now, Pastor Mota has been distributing fruit and vegetables on Fruity Fridays in Sun Valley. And it's been a labor of love to distribute this food, but it's been much more than that. It's been an opportunity to bring community together, to build community institutions, to create the kinds of relationships that make communities great. And I want to talk a little bit about his path and how he got there. It started about a decade ago, and he was committed to this food distribution, but the quality of the stuff that was being donated to his efforts wasn't always the best. And I think, sure as all of you who deal with donated food know, that sometimes you don't get the premium quality, first-grade stuff. And that was the experience that Pastor Mota was dealing with. And so an opportunity came up for him to improve that because he grew up in a family that was committed to public service, a family that featured a father that some of you may have heard of, named Manny Mota. Manny Mota, in my view, the greatest pinch hitter and one of the greatest batters that the Dodgers have had in their history. So Manny Mota, and I guess I should say, on Good Food Day, the apple doesn't fall far from the tree. Manny, thank you, thank you, Betsy. Manny Mota was not only himself committed to helping others in the Dominican Republic and here in the United States with so many of his charitable endeavors, but like his dad, Domingo also played in the Dodger organization and played professional baseball, and when he was done, he came to this effort to serve the public. As he's going through these struggles to get quality food, he noticed that his dad always seemed to have really high-quality produce around the house. And so he went, used his dad as an avenue to reach Melissa's World Variety Products. And Melissa's World's representatives are here as well today, who saw the opportunity to help others. And Melissa's World Variety Products stepped up and provided the highest quality, freshest produce and vegetables, fruits and vegetables for Pastor Mota's distribution. Didn't charge him a thing, and so all of a sudden, this program turned around completely. And he was able to serve schools, parks, homeless shelters, churches, throughout the community in distributing fruits and vegetables. Whereas before, they'd get a pallet of fruit, community would come together to pick out the bad stuff, you know, find the good stuff that was, could be distributed. Now, it was all good stuff, and it was all being, going out to those who were most in need. Through this process, and through building this process, he also brought the community together to participate in this distribution. And by doing that, it brought the community together for all sorts of other beneficial purposes as well. Once they found each other, just like some of our champions are finding each other here in council today, once the people in the community found each other, they were able to advocate for creation of new parks, for neighborhood watch and crime prevention, for bringing activity to our parks to try to retake them. In all sorts of ways, food was the first part of bringing people together, and then that expanded to build a more vibrant and active community in so many other ways as well. So Pastor Mota really has been more than just a distributor of food. He's been a spark plug for community evolution and activism throughout the Sun Valley area. And I couldn't be more proud to recognize him for all of his work, our food champion, Good Food Champion for Council District Two, Domingo Mota and his program at the Winds of Hope Church.
Mr. President, I have two more very quick things. One, I want to ask the executive director of the L.A. Food Policy Council, a strong and passionate food and environmental justice advocate, and the person who is responsible for this terrific day, to accept our Food Day certificate. So please welcome Claire Fox, and I'd like to present our Food Day certificate, 2016. And one last thing, I understand that everybody who came here today should have a Vote for Good Food for All ballot. And this ballot calls upon us as city leaders to prioritize the end of health disparities for low-income communities, ensure healthy food is affordable and accessible to all, cultivate a fair food economy where all workers are treated fairly and small business can thrive, and strengthen biodiversity, climate resiliency, and the health of our water, soil, and seed. So to make this Food Day resolution official, I invite everyone to cast your ballot for Good Food by raising it in the air and support. So thank you, everybody, for a great day and for all the terrific things that you do.
Okay, now, why don't we just, one more round of applause for all of our honorees today. Thank you all for all you do for the community. Thank you so, so very much.
Quickly invite everyone who's here for Food Day to join us for activities out on the south lawn, and of course, all the council members are welcome to join us who the session is over as well. Thank you.
Okay, now, we're going to move into item number five. I have Jim Macbeth. Is Danny Bakewell still here? I don't see him. Grant? Oh, yeah, Mr. Bakewell. We're on item five.
We ready?
The floor is yours.
Mr. President, members of the city council, let me begin by first thanking...
Wait, why don't we wait one second? Could we please exit quietly? Okay, Mr. Bakewell, could you restart, reset his clock? Ms. Clerk? Yes, sir.
Mr. President, members of the city council, I want to first begin by thanking you, Council President Wesson, Councilman Price, Councilman Harris Dawson, and the entire city council for your tremendous support of Taste of Soul, which took place on Crenshaw Boulevard the other day. It was magnificent, and it's a prelude for what I'm going to talk about. We have set a foundation on Crenshaw Boulevard, you have the Metro Rail coming through. We need Crenshaw Boulevard lit up like a Christmas tree. We have, the Metro Rail is important, but what is most important is that the businesses survive there and thrive. Crenshaw is the mecca of black business in Los Angeles. We need to make sure that that black business is not impaired. In order to make it work, we need great lighting, we need great landscaping, and we need easy and free parking. Without that, these businesses will not survive. We have a great metro line, but people will be just passing through, waving as they go by, and that's not what we want.
Thank you. Thank you. So if I can get Jim and Grant come forward? Yes, sir. It's on.
My name is Jim Macbeth. I am a property owner and a business owner on Crenshaw, and I've been on Crenshaw since 1972, so I've seen all of the good things and the bad things about Crenshaw, so I understand it quite well. What I would like to recognize is Councilman Dawson has been very instrumental in helping us to work on getting the lighting, people to participate in the new lighting, to try to facilitate getting new lighting on Crenshaw. So I've been very instrumental, and I would like to recognize another person that's been very instrumental in helping me do that, and that is Anita Williams. And she's not here today, she's on vacation. But we need not only lighting, since Crenshaw is going, that area, Crenshaw is going to be the first thing anyone's coming from any place.
Thank you. Thank you. So do I have Grant? From West Angeles? Did you want to say something, Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I think we lost a lot of our speakers to all that food out on the south lawn. But I just want to stand up and thank and recognize all of the merchants and property owners on Crenshaw Boulevard, especially beginning at La Merck Park and going south. This is where the Metro-Crenshaw Line is scheduled to run at grade, which is a very, very controversial move in the community. But our business owners and landowners have not faltered, they didn't quit, they sort of came together and they laid out a vision for trees, lighting, and parking along Crenshaw Boulevard. This motion today is actually, these folks who you saw here today knocked on their neighbors' doors, they called fellow property owners and asked them if they'd be willing to tax themselves so that we could have the highest quality lighting on Crenshaw along the Crenshaw Line. And so we expect the assessment district to pass, and we expect to create a situation where Slauson and La Merck Park are destinations on the metro line, not just places you pass through from the airport on your way downtown. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyway, good work, Mr. Harris Dawson. I want to thank the community folk for coming down. With that said, Madam, or Mr. Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Okay, I want to move now to item 21. I have Gary Benjamin, item 21. Mr. Benjamin, item 21. I don't see him here, the last call, one more time, Gary Benjamin. Okay, members, let's prepare to vote on that item. It's item 21. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Okay, we'll now move to item 20. We have James Onnit, Juan Nieto. On item 20, please come forward and identify yourself.
The other person who is with me? I believe he's in the restroom.
Well, hopefully, they'll hurry back. Go ahead.
My name is Juan Nieto. And I am representing Isaura Nieto, who is my sister. Isaura Muñoz, I'm sorry. She's my sister. We work at Nieto's Market, and she's the property owner of Nieto's Market. And our problem is that a 7-Eleven, it is going to be across from our business. We believe that our business is going to be bankrupt because of that business. It is a family business. That's all.
Okay, now, did the other speaker come back yet? Please come forward. Mr. James Onnit, identify yourself.
Yes. I'm here to speak against the 7-Eleven going in there. That neighborhood, primarily at night, there's not very many people around that neighborhood. And you bring in a establishment that's selling liquor, open 24 hours a day, is going to act as a magnet for crime in there, including burglarization of nearby buildings, prostitution, and drug dealing. Because again, it's the only, going to be the only business around that whole area that's open 24 hours a day selling liquor. And it's only going to increase the crime rate in there, and there's really no justification for another liquor establishment in the area. for another liquor establishment in the area. Thank you.
All right, so on... Mr. Weezer, did you wanna say something?
Mr. President, I wanted to speak on this because when it comes to granting licenses and beer and wine licenses in my district, I take great caution, particularly in this neighborhoods, the Bow Heights neighborhood. I believe there's an over-concentration of beer and wine licenses. However, in this case, the applicant has purchased and retired two ABC licenses in the vicinity of the new project. That's a good faith effort that results in the net reduction of licenses by one. And to be honest, initially, I did not like the idea even if they did that, but the applicant has also received the official support of the Community Police Advisory Board and the Hollenbach Division of L.A. P.D. Seems like they have done a number of things and conditions to ensure that this is... This business is operated appropriately. So with that, I ask for your support on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, on this item, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Thank you. I'm gonna move to item 29, Mr. Bonin.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. This item is an appointment to the West L.A. Area Planning Commission, nomination by Mayor Garcetti of Michael Newhouse of Venice, who is here with us today. I don't think there's a need for you to come up. There were no... I don't believe there's any questions, but I just wanted to say, ask for support for Mike, Mr. Newhouse's nomination. Mike replaces on the commission Tom Donvan, who was a longtime member of the commission, who was both an attorney and a voice for neighborhoods and the neighborhood councils on this commission. And his service will be missed, but the mayor chose wisely to replace him with someone else who is an attorney and who has a long, long history advocating for neighborhoods and being a member of the neighborhood council system. Mike has twice served as president of the Venice Neighborhood Council, which is hard combat duty, and has also served for a very long time as chair or president of the West Side Regional Alliance of Councils, which is a collection of all the West Side neighborhood councils, both mine and the ones on the West Side in Mr. Coretza's district. Mike has done phenomenal community service. He'll be a great advocate for our neighborhoods and for the West Side and for appropriate neighborhood-sensitive development, and I really look forward to his service, and I thank him for that service, and I ask for an eye vote.
Thank you. So on this item, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. It's my understanding the... We were waiting on amendment on item 50. That amendment has been circulated, so let's prepare to vote on that item, item 50. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, item 55. We have a substitute motion that has been circulated, so we are now free to vote on this item as well. So please... Okay, the first vote is to substitute. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
So now we'll vote on this motion as with the adjustment made to it. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Mr. Coretza, item 49. Are you ready to take up item 49?
Thank you, Mr. President. I already spoke a lot during the food presentation, so I'll try to be brief. And thank you to Councilmember Martinez for allowing us to bring this motion forward today. This motion will implement AB 1826, which requires businesses and multifamily residences to subscribe to organics recycling services and encourages the city to create adequate facilities to handle organics recycling, some of which is also known as composting. The problem with organics is then when it gets into the landfills, it creates methane gas and makes climate change worse. And if we handle it correctly, it can be used as clean energy, and we can use it to help create healthy soil, which can sequester carbon dioxide and actually improve climate change. So robust organics recycling is one of the cutting-edge climate actions the city can take and will move us towards the city's zero-waste goals as a perfect complement to the city's new waste franchising system. The vote today sends sanitation off to create the program with important details listed in the motion, and I ask for your eye vote.
Madam Clerk, there are three cards on this item. The first speaker is Lauren Akeem. Oh, hi, Lauren. Our next speaker is Stephen Weinbrandt.
Good morning, Council, and happy Food Day. My name is Lauren Akeem, and I'm the senior research and policy analyst on the Don't Waste L.A. Project at L.A. Food Day is such a wonderful opportunity to lift up the great work being done for a healthy, fair, and sustainable food system here in L.A. And we know, as Councilmember Coretza mentioned, how critical food scraps and organic waste are to our new zero-waste system and our zero-waste goals as a city. So we'd like to thank the Council for their leadership on revamping our waste and recycling system and for taking those necessary steps to make sure we have the infrastructure we need to be able to recycle organics and keep them out of landfills. Many thanks as well to the Bureau of Sanitation, who I saw were here earlier, and the Food Policy Council for all their work on this issue. We're excited to continue the work on organics at the heart of zero-waste and for the Zero-Waste L.A. System contracts to be approved so we can move forward on the good work laid out in this motion to continue the necessary steps to expand our organics infrastructure, make it easy to recycle organic waste and food scraps. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lauren. Next speaker is Stephen Weinbrandt, followed by Kaya Rose Ostender. I think that's the... Is that person here? Good morning.
Morning. I was told I have two minutes, and I can do this in 1:58.
You have one minute on the clock, sir.
I'm Stephen Weinbrandt, founder of Weinbrandt Farms. I'm from West L.A., Councilman Coretza's district. I'm an urban farmer, and I produce one of five Demeter-certified biodynamic composts sold in the state of California. Demeter is the highest agricultural standard in the world and far exceeds USDA's organic standard. When organic matter is assembled correctly with expert skill and exacting precision, it transforms into virtuous compost, a profound product of alchemy that holds answers to some of the most critical issues humanity faces. It has the power to heal and transform our food system, us and our world. It's at the core of a set of ancient agricultural practices that have recently been named regenerative agriculture, which create, revitalize, and grow healthy soil. Healthy soil sequesters carbon from the atmosphere and stores it in the top humus layer of soil where it belongs and is desperately needed. This may be the single most important strategy to mitigating the effects of climate change. Healthy soil grows a quality of food that is rarely eaten today. The connection between soil health and human health cannot be overstated. Healthy soil holds and retains exponential amounts of water.
Thank you very much, sir. Our next speaker, please.
Good morning, good afternoon, council members. My name is Calla Rose Ostrander. I recently moved from San Francisco down to L.A. I want to congratulate all the council members on their recent work with Zero-Waste L.A. and the move towards managing our waste stream better. I am the co-founder of a project called the California Carbon Project. We're dedicated to stabilizing the earth's carbon cycle by reconnecting organic material streams to the soil. I just want to thank Councilmember Cortez, the L.A. Food Policy Council, and all those who are going to be voting in favor of this motion here today. It's very, very, very important that L.A. lead on this. We have cities like San Francisco leading, we have small cities like Bakersfield leading. It's important to see what L.A. is going to do in this area, both for the state of California and the nation. Because when big cities looked for examples on who's doing well with composting and organics, we need to have L.A. be at the front and center. Thank you for helping with that.
Thank you very much. That concludes speakers on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Let's move on to item one.
And on item one, Madam President, there are requests to continue. One G, one I, one O, and one X for two weeks to November 8th.
Without objection, that will be the order. I've got a few cards on item one. Yolanda Gonzalez, are you here? Yolanda Gonzalez, I don't see anyone coming to the podium. Next speaker, Stanley Kimmel. Stanley Kimmel. I don't see that person either. And Robert Vega. Robert Vega. Madam Clerk, please note that none of the three speakers have come forward to the podium. So let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Thank you.
And Madam President, on item one AA, there is an amending motion.
So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Okay, I think we'll move to general public comment. It's Brian Baras. Please come forward. And I believe Mr. Robert Vega has left, so Mr. Baras.
Okay. On the LaRouche PAC website, we have a title called Obama's Legacy: Death, Destruction, and Economic Ruin. I'm pretty sure some of you have heard that some of the events of the drug trade have pretty much went to sky heaven, shall we say. The destruction of economics is very simple. We have not determined in ourselves what are we going to do about it. Now, I emphasize two things here. One, that the city council take up the power to actually restore the Constitution by implementation of our law called Glass-Steagall to go against Wall Street looting. Now, your causes of your issues of your problems at the federal down to the local is very simple. Your problem is you don't have a functional structure to finance what you need at the federal level on down. Go to LaRouche PAC if you wish to know Alexander Hamilton's resolve.
Okay, so now... Or let me just say to the city attorney, I have no more cards on general public comment, so that ends general public comment for today. But Madam Clerk, I believe at this point, we can vote on items 24, 37, 38, 39, 41, 43, 45, and 47.
And, Mr. President, for the record, an amending motion 24A has been posted and circulated for consideration.
Thank you. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Okay, we're gonna now go into item 23. Ann, I saw you earlier. Ann, come on up. Job.
And, Mr. President, as the speakers come forward, there have been amending motions 23A, 23B, and 23C have been posted and circulated for consideration.
Well, Ann, you are the only speaker on this issue.
And I'm here... My name is Ann Job, and I'm from Silmar, and I'm speaking only for myself. I just want to thank the Homelessness and Poverty Committee for bringing this to the Council. I appreciate it's probably not an easy task, but it's terribly important that we provide safe parking for our homeless and provide restrooms and showers at that safe parking. And I so appreciate your work in this regard. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. I think I'd like to recognize Mr. The Chair, Mr. Harris Dawson at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. And members, before you is item number 23, which is our overnight parking policy. Folks know that we had to improve and change the existing policy that we had due to litigation. Today, what you have before you today is a motion with a series of amendments that we're accepting as friendly, that tries to strike a balance and tries to come up with something that is livable for residents, for business owners, for parents of school-age children, for folks who use our parks and libraries and other sensitive uses throughout the city, while at the same time acknowledging that nothing we could pass today will make people living in their cars disappear. And nothing we could pass, except for an extreme measure, would do... An extreme measure would place us in a position where we were telling people to get out of your car and sleep on the sidewalk, which is not illegal in the city. And so we think with the participation of lots of members and lots of neighborhoods and lots of community, we've kind of come up with something that makes sense for the city of Los Angeles at this moment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I'd like to recognize Mr. O'Farro at this point.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to acknowledge Mr. Harris Dawson for his leadership on this very important issue and the great work that this committee has done on this very, very important ordinance that we're about to support the draft of. And as Mr. Harris Dawson mentioned, the friendly amending motions that further protects the sensitive areas in our districts that we all hear about a lot from our constituents. So I think this really helps clarify any of those concerns that I raised. And then parking restrictions that are currently in place that our neighborhoods have petitioned and worked toward getting in place based on existing activities, not having anything to do with our vulnerable homeless population, but such nuisance activity as nightlife near residential areas, et cetera. So just for everyone's information, this holds those protections and protects the existing neighborhood protections that communities have petitioned for over the years across the entire city. So those will be held in place and will supersede anything with this... Changes with this new ordinance. So again, great work on this Homelessness and Poverty Committee, work that's not always appreciated or universally appreciated, but it should be because these answers aren't easy to get to, and we must because we really have no other choice. So great deliberative work on the committee, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise to support this proposal and to thank Mr. Harris Dawson and my colleagues on the committee for their work on it. This is not a perfect piece of legislation. It's not a perfect solution. But it's more perfect by a large measure than the two alternatives. The alternative that we used to have, which criminalized everywhere, and the alternative that we effectively have in place now, which permits everywhere. The courts have effectively said to Los Angeles for like a generation now on a variety of different issues, that unless we do more in providing housing and services, we don't have a lot of enforcement authority. And what that effectively means is that until we say yes somewhere, we're saying yes everywhere. That's the result of the court decisions, and that creates an untenable situation for our neighborhoods. It creates an untenable situation for ourselves, and it needs to be fixed. And Mr. Harris Dawson talked about some of the facts that got us into this situation. As we were telling people in some cases in my district before I took office, get out of the car and sleep on the sidewalks. And that does not work. I look forward to the next step in this, where we actually create in Los Angeles the safe parking program that we need, and I know that is coming. And it's really... It's really absolutely necessary. I met a young woman just the other day who is finally housed. She had been living on Venice Beach for a couple of years, and she became homeless because her mother had a catastrophic illness, lost her job, and her mother was living in her car on the streets of Venice. And she fled and slept on the beach because she was afraid DCFS was gonna come and take her away and put her in foster care. A few weeks before that, I met a young mom who works now for Venice Community Housing, who was living outside a school in Venice in a car with her two toddler children. And she finally got connected to a program and found a place to live and a job, and her kids are happy and thriving. And we need that next step of the safe parking... And we need that next step of the safe parking program so that we cannot just put a Band-Aid on the problem, but actually solve it. But this is a smart step getting there, and it is a huge improvement over where we have been on this issue for a decade now. So I thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson.
Mr. Corret.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I also thank Mr. Harris Dawson for his good work as chair, and Mr. O'Farrell and Mr. Corret for their amendments that I think will be particularly helpful and on target in my district. I am also slightly concerned that what we do here should not impede the safe parking program that Mr. Bonin mentioned, that can help us avoid further litigation and also provide people that are sleeping on the streets a place to park their cars and not be in encampments or in residential neighborhoods. So I just ask that we keep that in mind as we move forward and craft this so that we don't have to go back and undo pieces of it so we can do our safe parking program. So I think that's absolutely critical as well, and hopefully will help hundreds, if not thousands, of people find a safe place to park.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I have real concerns about this. My primary concern is that they think that we are effectively going to push folks that are living in their vehicles into commercial and industrial areas. And in my case, I represent some of these commercial industrial areas in the San Fernando Valley. Most of this, the industrial areas in the valley are concentrated in half of our districts. One of them is City 6 and of course, City 7. And so, my concern is that the communities of the northeast San Fernando Valley are going to disproportionately be affected by this policy. And when we talk about all of us sharing the burden of how and how we deal with the homeless issue, it, I can't help but to feel like this is, there's an intent here, a discriminatory attempt to discriminate against the districts that historically have had to pay the price of environmental justice, of having to pay the price of some of the poor zoning decisions that the city has made over the years. And we work so hard, and Mr. Weesar knows this, we worked on cleanup, greenup to protect the communities or in some of these industrial areas. And so now we're saying, we're finally saying to folks that live in these industrial areas, what we've been doing is wrong, we need to do more to protect you. But now we're actually going to now allow people to live in their cars in these sensitive areas around the city. And for half of our, half of the people that represent the City of Los Angeles, half of your districts, when we're talking about Wilmington, I'm talking about Sun Valley and Pacoima, I'm talking about Royal Heights, we have paid the price of poor land use decisions for people who live in these sensitive areas. And now we're saying it's okay to have people live in their vehicles in these very areas that we're trying to protect people from. So I think that's, you know, I don't know, I know that the intent of the committee wasn't to discriminate about, you know, particular districts, but it certainly feels that historically we're doing the same thing to these communities that have been overburdened over decades of poor planning decisions. And the majority of the industrial and commercial areas in the San Fernando Valley are concentrated in the northeast valley. And so this is not, this is not sharing the burden of having to solve this issue. And we keep talking about that every time we come up with a different strategy to solve this problem. This isn't going to be a problem in Bel Air. This isn't going to be a problem, you know, in other affluent areas in the city. It's going to become a problem in the northeast San Fernando Valley, particularly City 7 and City 6. I brought my father home from the hospital yesterday. He happens to live across the street from a, from a commercial industrial zone. He came home to six to seven people living in their vehicles. I called Foothill. I'm glad you're here, Commander Chamberlain. What do I do in terms of the security issues around these areas and neighborhoods that when they call the police station, there isn't enough manpower to go make these neighborhoods, you know, safe? What do we do in that instance? You don't have the manpower to not only respond to 911 calls, but have to go out there and provide security for some of these neighborhoods that live across the street from industrial areas. You just don't have the manpower. And so when we talk about finding solutions, members, you know, sometimes all you need to do is flip through, flip through these maps and find out which one, where in our city are these, do we have the over-concentration of industrial zones and commercial zones? Just flip through these maps, and you will see that in the San Fernando Valley, it's my district and City 7 who doesn't have a representative right now. So I don't think that that's fair. I don't think that that's an approach that a lot of us can live with, and I am not going to be supporting this today. And I ask you to not support it and wait until we can come back and develop a safe parking program on public and private lots so that we can find real solutions and not objections. Thank you.
Mr. Bloomingfield.
Thank you. I rise, I like the step that you're moving forward. I want to thank Mr. Marquis Harris Dawson for the work that you've done and that the committee has done. I did want to get the city attorney's take to get a sense from you all about what we need in terms of language. You know, the first 8502 was considered unconstitutionally vague. Is, what's the guidance from the Ninth Circuit in terms of what are the milestones we have to hit in term, as we write this new ordinance? Because what we're asking you today, we're not actually voting on the ordinance, we're asking you to write the ordinance. So if I could ask the city attorney's office to address those questions, even some of the questions about how we post our signs for something like this. I know, do we have to post them everywhere, or can it be a citywide ordinance that's done without requiring all of that signage?
Good afternoon, council members. David Michelson with the city attorney's office. With me are my colleagues Valerie Flores and Blythe Bach. We believe that the recommendations from committee and these additional motions that were introduced today will provide sufficient direction to the city attorney's office to prepare and transmit relatively quickly, and an ordinance that'll be back before you for final consideration and adoption. We believe we can draft and transmit an ordinance that will be constitutionally sound, based on existing case law in the U.S. currently.
To answer one of the questions you asked, the Ninth Circuit focused on language as vague in our current ordinance that uses the words "or otherwise." So the court said a reasonable person wouldn't have any knowledge about what "or otherwise" meant. And so, in the new ordinance, what we are gonna do is look to guidance from the U.S. Supreme Court, which dealt with a similar issue in the national parks. The national parks preclude using certain areas as living accommodations, and so we're gonna borrow from that language that's already been approved by the U.S. Supreme Court.
Okay. And what about the signage issue?
Right. So this ordinance will prohibit conduct. The court in California, if we're going to regulate parking, we do need to provide signage. But this isn't a parking restriction, this is a dwelling restriction. So the two can peacefully coexist. This ordinance will keep in place all of the city's parking restrictions, but will add a conduct restriction in terms of where people can dwell in their cars.
So even though it's linked to some of the parking signage, you know, overnight parking, but we're adding an extra piece, it doesn't have to have its own signage?
Right. Again, because it's regulating conduct, not parking.
Okay. And in terms of enforcement, who, which agencies, departments would enforce this? And would it be complaint-driven, or would it be proactive in terms of, I guess it could be a number of ways, but in terms of the ways that you're intending on drafting it?
Well, it's the Los Angeles Police Department will be the enforcement entity within the city family. The recommendations from the committee have a violation subject to an infraction. And I believe the first infraction would be met with a $25 fine. Of course, LAPD police officers in using their law enforcement discretion could issue warnings, they could, in addition to issuing the citation, depending on the circumstances they encounter.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Sadiya.
I just want to respond to the comments made by our esteemed colleague, Ms. Martinez. You are right that we cannot do right by doing wrong. And so while we have laudable goals with respect to this proposal, I'm glad that we're at the beginning of the process and not at the end. Because I think there is this uniqueness that's emerging in Los Angeles as we look for places to build, that in fact, we are building in industrial areas. Royal Heights, downtown Los Angeles, Lincoln Heights, Avenue 26. You know, we are kind of limited in land, and so we are building where we find opportunity. And in many instances, opportunity is in old industrial areas. The footprint was of warehousing and manufacturing. Now those areas are abandoned with brownfields cleanup, thoughtful development, we can build housing there, and we are in fact doing that. But in doing that, we have come across this challenge where it appears that we're saying it's okay in some respects to, for people to stay in their vehicles in these areas, not acknowledging these new developments. And so I think we should give instruction to the, to the city attorney to have him acknowledge that and address that. And I think that can be fashioned in a way with an acknowledgement of that reality and fashioned in a way that then protects someone who comes home and happens to live in these developments. I know for sure that in my district, at Avenue 26 between Figueroa, between Broadway, there are developments there. My district office was there in the assembly that would permit this activity that would be contrary to our goal, which is not to put it in residential areas. And so, that we should give instruction to the CA to be responsive to that.
Good point, Mr. Sadiya. Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to make a few comments in response to Ms. Martinez's comments. I totally understand the concern and the frustration that she raises. I have the, my district has the third-largest homeless population of all the districts in the city. Venice has the second-largest concentration of homelessness in the city. When I lived a block and a half from the beach in Venice for years, I had an actual RV encampment in front of my building for years. You could not look out the window and see anything other than RVs. I've got people living in their cars outside of an elementary school in Venice. Some cars with very profane graffiti on it. I've got, in front of people's homes all over the place, the situation that Ms. Martinez described that her father encountered. And I think, I hope you know that if there's been a through line to my advocacy on the issue of homelessness, it has been to not try to force the situation into anybody else's district, but to actually solve it. If anything, I get tremendous criticism for not trying to push the problem somewhere else. I really believe we can't keep pushing the problem around, and we have to, we have to solve it. I've been advocating for a safe parking program since before I was elected, and so was my predecessor, who represents, who represented the same affluent coastal areas where we have such a large concentration. I don't believe we should be pushing the situation anywhere else. I think we need to be solving it everywhere. And I am absolutely committed to solutions in my district: storage, bathrooms, housing, shelter, and safe parking. And if we get safe parking online, there will be safe parking in my district. It'll be in public lots, it'll be in private lots, it'll be in church lots. It absolutely will happen, and I assure you of that. And there are, in my district, still plenty of industrial and commercial areas where I trust that people will continue to park and live until we provide them alternatives to doing that. So I am committed, Ms. Martinez, to making sure that we're not pushing this around. And I'm gonna do everything I can to try to continue to work to solve the problem where the problem exists. And I hope that that's something that as a city, we all join together and do. Thank you.
Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to stand in support of the motion authored by our colleague, Marquis Harris Dawson. I certainly am sympathetic to the concerns raised by Councilwoman Martinez. You know, I have a large population of homeless. You know, there are sometimes vans, campers parked in front of schools on corners. It's a, it's a difficult dilemma. I've said before, I live right on 38th and Main, right around the corner from the shelter on 38th and Broadway. And so, I see, I see these issues daily also. I think this approach is best in a bad situation. It's best in a bad situation, but I think it's something that we have to move forward with. I think it is a responsible, measured approach that, along with everything else that we're doing, you know, may give us not only to see some light. But I think this is a step, this is a baby step, this is a necessary step. I support it, and I'm hopeful that we can use it as a building block for the much more comprehensive, much deeper, much more permanent solutions that we need in this area. Thank you.
Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, colleagues, for your comments. I had one question for the city attorneys, just to, I wanted to thank everybody for their comments, especially Ms. Martinez, the spirit and the passion with which they were delivered. Representing Council District 8, I certainly appreciate being, receiving the brunt of the city's shortsightedness, mistakes, outright discrimination, and all the rest. But speaking very, very practically to the issue that Councilwoman Martinez raised, does anything we're doing today, or we're proposing to do, stop any member from proposing a parking ban on any thoroughfare and from the council adopting that parking restriction on a block-by-block or stretch-by-stretch basis?
Do overnight parking restriction would preclude? Right. So the committee report recommended that there be no vehicle dwelling on any street where an overnight parking restriction is posted. So if there are sensitive streets in any area, if they are posted with an overnight parking ban, they will also be off limits to vehicle dwelling. So that is a tool for the council in each council district to figure out where your sensitive issues are, even if they're non-residential, they happen to be commercial or industrial. So it is a tool, it would just require a resolution by the city council to post a sign on that block. So we did try to, I think the committee tried to anticipate that there would be, you know, some sensitive areas even within the commercial and industrial zones.
Thank you.
Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also find it very ironic that some of the folks proposing this also have a number of motions in place to ban oversized, overnight, banned oversized vehicles overnight. So anyhow, I wanted to call Commander Chamberlain to the table, because I think he shares a perspective of what it, of unintended consequences of enacting these types of policies. And I also share, I want to share my frustration about the fact that, you know, we're so paranoid about constantly being sued over this issue, but we don't seem to ever sue anyone else. I don't know at what point does the City of Los Angeles has to push back, because we have other jurisdictions in the San Fernando Valley who feel very comfortable pushing their homelessness issue into my community, but we don't ever seem to do anything about that issue. So as much as we hate to get sued, it doesn't stop anyone from suing us because we certainly don't sue anyone else. And so on this issue, I almost feel like we throw our hands in the air and say, well, you know, we got sued for this issue, so now we gotta do this, or we might get sued for that issue, so we can't do that. But other jurisdictions feel very comfortable pushing their issues But other jurisdictions feel very comfortable pushing their issues into the City of Los Angeles, and we do nothing about it. Sir?
Yeah, for law enforcement, obviously, whatever the council comes forward with, we will be there to support and to make sure that we serve you and the people of Los Angeles as best and effectively as possible. But like the city attorney mentioned, we will become the enforcement component for the events that arise out of here. And really, I guess that the one thing to say is that sometimes the best intentions cause some unforeseen circumstances. And in the area of legitimizing a potential problem, when you look back at 4118D, which allowed for the actual tents, that opened up a lot of issues for law enforcement, and in turn, it was the catalyst for a lot of the lawsuits, in the Levon, in the Jones, and then subsequently with Mitchell, with the implementation of 5611. So again, we are going to support and address whatever comes out of the board and whatever comes out of the council. But without question, there will be some long-term situations that will develop. Again, some of those aren't even known now, because we are not there yet, if there is a standardized parking for homeless in their vehicles. Some of those that can basically come up would be who's going to provide safety and services at those locations, oversight of the sites, sanitation. A lot of the vehicles that the homeless reside and live in, they truly are biohazards. So that is going to be something. And then the issues of if people fail to leave. Now we have people who fail to leave their tents, based on 4118, and that has caused some huge issues with the encampments throughout the city. And again, that'll be something that's unforeseen at this time, because we don't know, we haven't been there yet, and it's going to have to develop as we go. But these people who don't want to come out of these parking structures, and once they do come out of them, where do they go? Do they pull out onto the street? Again, that's all the issues that we're going to have to contend with and to deal with. And that's just something as anodally and from law enforcement perspective, again, we are here to support whatever comes out. And again, a lot of this is unknown at this time, and it'll, it'll develop as it goes. But again, like the city attorney said, we are going to be the ones, law enforcement, that will be responsible for ensuring the safety of both the communities and also the safety of the homeless individuals, and doing it in a manner that doesn't criminalize. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that, no other speakers on the Q, it's time to vote on this issue. Madam Clerk, why don't you walk us through what's going to happen?
Mr. President, there is a request to receive and file Motion 23A.
Without objection, that'll be the order.
And then on the matter itself, there are motions, amending motions 23B and C.
Okay, well, let's take those items up. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, one no.
So the motion does pass. That brings us where?
And for clarification, that passes as amended by 23B and C. And that brings counsel to motions for posting and referral.
Okay, they are posted, they are referred. Announcements, members? No announcements? If I can ask everyone to please rise for adjourning motions. Please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Harris Dawson.
Mr. Chair and colleagues, I'm asking, on behalf of our colleague, Councilmember Joe Buscaino, that we adjourn, and a beloved member of the 15th Council Districts, Bobby Antoniós, who died on October 12th in a tragic shooting in a restaurant in Harbor City. I think we are joined by some of Bobby's family, his niece Sophia, his brother Jerry, his wife Vasso, his brother-in-law Greg. If you all could let us wave and let us know where you are. Bobby was born in Greece in 1955. He grew up in a modest family with two siblings. In January 1978, he met the love of his life, his wife Vasso. Bobby moved to San Pedro in his young adulthood and opened his restaurants, Bob's Hamburgers, at Harbor City on May 1st, 1985. Bobby had a great heart and was loved by his community. He was the kind of person that was offered free food to guests who came in hungry and could not afford to pay for a meal. On October 12th, a shooter entered Bob's Hamburgers, and Bobby unfortunately ended up in the line of fire and was fatally shot. He is survived by his family members that are with us today. We, as a city, are deeply saddened to have lost a resident and a business owner and an immigrant who contributed so much to our city. He will be greatly missed by all the folks in San Pedro and around the city who were regulars at the restaurant and knew him to be a generous and active member of our community. May Bobby rest in peace.
And to the family, the prayers of the entire council are with you. Mr. Bonin, did you?
And I believe Mr. Coretts is going to...
Mr., well, here, I want to go to Mr. Coretts. Is this Mr. Hayden?
Actually, I was intending to do that tomorrow, if...
Okay. Then let me go back over here. Mr. Bloomingfield.
Thank you. I'd like to adjourn the memory of Kimberly Whitlow Candido, the mother of one of my former interns, Annie. Kimberly Candido passed away on October 15th, 2016, at her home in Rancho Palos Verdes, California. She was born in October of 1958 in Chicago and was born to Donald and Barbara Whitlow. She graduated from the University of California, Santa Barbara, in 1980, moved to Los Angeles to begin a career in sales in Hewlett Packard, followed by fundraising at the University of Southern California. In 85, she married Guy Robert Candido, and together they had two beautiful children, Annie, who I mentioned, was an intern, and Michael, 19. And she really had wanted to be a mother, so at that time, she gave up her career in technology and fundraising to be a stay-at-home mother. And she was a voracious reader. She made sure her children were literate before they entered kindergarten. She often filled her days volunteering at school, attending her children's sports games, helping them with homework, and she, she just loved that aspect. In addition to her love of learning, she cared deeply about the community in which she lived. And she was very involved in philanthropy, including the National Charity League, Las Amigas de los Lomas, and Palos Verdes Land Conservancy. She had tremendous inner strength beyond what even she may have realized, as she battled multiple types of cancer for half of a decade. She tried every treatment and surgery available, no matter how arduous and how painful, to give her the best chance to have a little more time with her friends and her family. She was preceded in death by her sister Susan, her sister-in-law Stephanie, and her mother Barbara. She is survived by her father Donald, brother Greg, husband Guy, and her two children, Annie and Michael. May she rest in peace.
Thank you. Mr. Sedia.
Mr. President, I'm going to talk about Tom Hayden, my friend. I know Mr. Coretts is going to speak tomorrow, I imagine others. But I just want to say a few things because of a, you know, personal relationship that I had with Tom. You know, Sunday was a very sad day. Today, I'm, you know, I'm still sad, but I'm also, you know, angry a little bit. Tom, much like I was when Paul Wildstone passed away. You know, Tom was so vital to our community, so integral to all of us who struggle to make this a better world. I'm upset that he allowed himself to go down to that fracking well that he went to, and he got sick, and then didn't seem to ever get over it. I was constantly bugging him about taking care of his health. He had paid his dues, he had done so much for so many, that I'm upset that he's not going to be present with us. You know, I grew up knowing who Tom Hayden was, like many of us did in the '60s and the '70s, but I didn't get to meet him until later in my life. I met him the 98, at the 88 Democratic Convention. I got to meet him at Purchase's book. But I got to know him a few years later, when I was the head of Local 660 SEIU. He was a friend of mine. We'd go to basketball games and go see the Dodgers. Tom loved baseball. He'd sneak away to go to this baseball camp every, every spring. He always had a kind word for me and for my wife during the difficult years before my wife passed away, very sensitive to the challenges that I was facing during that time period. You recall, we were at, up in Sacramento at that time. Tom taught me to be fearless and uncompromising when you believe that's the appropriate thing to do. And he was that for the things that he advocated for. He was a champion for the Justice for Janitors, for all things immigrant, for the car wash, as they call the, the car wash shadows is what they're called now. He was a champion for so many causes that people just kind of took him for granted, but he was always there. And I appreciated him, particularly, you will recall this, in 1995, when we were fighting to keep the healthcare system afloat. And he was ever-present at the county, as we were, with the Reverend Jesse Jackson and others, and thousands of county workers, trying to protect the healthcare system. And he was integral to that struggle during that time period. He was there, his staff was there, always speaking, always creating forums and venues for us in the Capitol to lobby, to advocate, and he was a real champion. But I appreciated that a half year later, when I left SEIU abruptly, that he signed a letter that many people in the community signed that put him in a difficult political spot, because he wrote a letter, or he signed onto a letter that was critical of that union's decisions to separate from myself and the union. And it put him in a difficult spot, because he had his political aspirations, he was always looking for a better platform to serve, and yet, he was a great friend and willing to step up. I have fond memories of him. We spent some days in Mexico City with Jerry Adams, in a entourage with Jerry Adams, traveling through Mexico City in a overheated suburban that stopped right at 3 o'clock in the afternoon of Mexico City's thick traffic. I have fond memories of Tom and many of his sayings. He would always have these short sayings. Sometimes I'd try to tease him or criticize him. He was working with Senator Pete Knight, willing to compromise and willing to build a coalition, and he was working with Senator Pete Knight on some programs for youth, and at-risk youth. And I said, what are you doing, working with that conservative guy? And he said, Gilbert, a drowning man will grab any hat. And it was his expression to say, look, just do what you got to do to do, do the right Lots will be said about Tom Hayden and his contributions, his writings, his political work, his commitment, but for me, Tom Hayden was a friend. And he was accessible and available whenever you needed him, and whenever you asked for his friendship, and whenever you needed it. And I know he loved his wife, I know he loved his family, and I know he loved his life. And we will miss him.
Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I knew Tom in various ways. I knew Tom as a legend. I knew him as a legislator. I knew him as a constituent, and I knew him as a friend. When I was in high school in the '80s, I somehow discovered the Port Huron Statement and started seeing the world in a very different way. I was, you know, 15, 20 years old at that time, but it, it sort of woke me up. And it was a powerful statement then, and I think in many ways, it's still a powerful statement today. And when I, when I got to California, and I was working for Ruth Galanter, I had the opportunity to see Tom in action, because their districts overlapped a bit. And Tom was very instrumental in helping resolve some of the gang truces that the West Side suffered back in the 1990s. And the, one of the things that struck me about the way Tom approached the issue is he actually hired someone who was a gang member to work on his staff and help with the gang truces. Tom was absolutely instrumental in preserving the Biona Wetlands on the West Side. Everybody knows where Playa Vista is. Everything west of Lincoln was once targeted for development, and Tom helped preserve that vital ecosystem. It was a battle he fought for a very long time, working with the grassroots, and he was absolutely resolute about that. When I took office, I learned Tom was a constituent. And Tom could be a real pain in the butt. And I think he would be very happy to know that I'm saying that. Tom always pushed very hard, wanted you to do more, wanted you to think more, wanted you to expand the envelope, and wanted you to go a lot faster. And, you know, he was a, both an ally and an instigator in the fracking legislation that Mr. Coretts and I worked on. He was a great thorn in the city's side in helping us crack down on a developer in Sullivan Canyon in his neighborhood who ripped out protected trees, trees that are protected species, precious oaks. Tom stood up and helped rally that community, and we were able to take some steps towards justice on that. Tom was just an amazing guy, and it's been, it's been a tough couple of years for progressive leadership on the West Side. Leonard Beerman, and Stanley Scheinbaum, and Bill Rosendahl, and now Tom Hayden. He leaves a huge legacy as a thinker, as an activist, as a leader, and as an instigator, and I'm going to miss him.
Mr. Coretts.
I think I'll do something formal tomorrow. I'll just add just a tiny bit to that. Of course, the whole world knows Tom Hayden, because he is one of the best-known progressive activists, originally known for his participation as one of the Chicago Seven at the 1968 Democratic Convention, and their protests, and their arrests, and for his opposition to the Vietnam War, along with his wife Jane Fonda. They were both pretty dramatically disliked, to say it gently, by a number of people for that. And when Tom decided to become a local elected official in a pretty Democratic district, he always did a lot worse than others, because there are a lot of folks for whom he was the last person in the world they would vote for because of his opposition to that war and his progressive stances. Now, I had a little direct impact from that, because in the year 2000, I was running for the State Assembly, and I had actually spent three years campaigning for that. And at the very end, he decided that he was tired of having these difficult races for his own seat, so he was going to move into a more liberal district at the last minute and run against me. He took his time, still hadn't moved, didn't look like he was going to move, so I rented a big moving van and put a sign on the side of it, Paul Coretts's Moving Service, and had a press conference in front of his house, announcing that if he ever did want to move into the district, I would be happy to do that for him. He was not real happy with me for a little while. Ultimately, he, I think, had a little bit of an identity crisis. He turned 65. The governor vetoed a bunch of his bills, and he actually wound up not running, which I greatly appreciated. He did run for the city council in Council District 5. And with some irony, he lost because he never really moved into the district, and there, he got more real criticism for it. And I was sorry for that. I think he would have been a great council member, was always a great progressive leader, and certainly one of my role models politically throughout my lifetime. And I can't say how sorely he will be missed.
Thank you all. I'm still looking on my right side. I do not see any other adjourning motions, members. This meeting is adjourned.